Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation on our pledge of allegiance. Don Duncan is the pastor for the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office. He's going to lead us in the invocation today. I'll ask Councilman James Greiner to lead us in the pledge of allegiance when he's completed. But everyone, please stand.
As we come before your throne of grace at this time of need, we thank you for opening up this blessed privilege of coming before you in prayer through the scepter of the Lord Jesus Christ. We pray for your grace and mercy to be upon our nation, our state, our city, at this great time of need. We pray that you will guide the mayor and the city council with your grace through all the things that they have to go through, through all the eternal principles of God's Word will guide them. Father, there's many agendas on the -- I have many items on the agenda. We pray for wisdom in all the procedures. We pray for integrity in each contract. And Father, we pray that Oklahoma City will be the standard of excellence in ethics and character, showing that honoring your eternal principles will make us not only a great city, but a distinguishable city, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. We begin with a series of appointments on item three. I'll look for a motion for A, B, C, and D. Motion and a second. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. This time, I'd like to move up item 8i. Dr. Goodlow is here from the Medical Control Board. He has driven down from Tulsa. We want to let him get back, but he's going to give us a presentation. Dr. Goodlow, thank you for coming down and again for council's clarification. This is item 8i that is being moved up to the front.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the consideration. You may be happy to know I was in Oklahoma City last night and will be in Oklahoma City all day today, so this is very much a two-city practice of EMS medicine. And I come before you, as I do most years, last year, the budget for the Medical Control Board was on the consent agenda. I was here for questions, but Mr. Dowler asked me if I'd like to address the council or just simply be available this year. And I don't want to go too long without you hearing some good words about your EMS system, because we have 3,700 men and women that come to work each and every shift dedicated to life-saving skill, and their results are simply exemplary. It's certainly the privilege and honor of the Medical Control Board that I work for in my office of the medical director to support those 3,700 people and their mission. So the budget that you have for your consideration actually does a couple of things. Number one, it serves to underscore the value of how your EMS system is structured. I have had the privilege of working as a medical director in other cities where I've worked directly for an ambulance administrator or directly for a fire chief. And while the relationships that we have with your fire chief and with Mr. Williamson and IMSA are certainly very, very productive and always cordial and collegial, I will tell you that sometimes that structure puts a medical director in a difficult position because he or she may be asked to make clinical decisions, medical decisions, largely factoring some political or financial incentives. And that can be directly translated to sometimes you're forced to make some decisions just to keep a job. And so there certainly are people that can fire me, and I certainly respect that. But the way that this system is set up, it allows me and it allows the Medical Control Board to first and foremost make decisions with clinical reasoning, what is absolutely best for the patient. And that translates to the high standards of care we have in our EMS system. The protocols, the treatment protocols that the EMTs and paramedics are following today, there is not a single one of those that hasn't been reviewed within the last six months. We literally have EMS systems around the world, more than they ever have, indexing their treatment protocols to what happens right here in Oklahoma City and Tulsa on a daily basis. It is indeed a great, great time in our EMS system. The results that I'd like to share with you today, and understand that cardiac arrest is the most serious of the conditions we treat. The fact whether somebody lives or dies is owned by this EMS system. We certainly work very closely with all our hospital partners, but when somebody falls over dead in the community, their only chance for survival is this EMS system to try to resuscitate them and then get them to a hospital. And so there are so many variables that we have to track with that, that it takes time to really put those together and know for sure the integrity of that data. So I don't have the 2012 data to share with you today, but I do have calendar year 2011 data that's recently been concluded. And what I want to share with you with excitement is when somebody has a witnessed arrest, a witness collapse in this community, and they have the benefit of any form of bystander CPR, which is most commonly initiated by trained emergency medical dispatchers in our 911 communications center here. So we're able to provide life-saving instructions while certified help is on the way. And then we find that victim in a heart disturbance that is amenable to an electric shock, 42.6% of those individuals leave the hospital alive. Over 90% of those individuals leave neurologically intact. What that means is someone collapses in this community, and there's a very high chance that they're going to be saved and that they are going to go back to the quality of life, the quality of family enjoyment that they had prior to that sudden unexpected event. To put that in perspective, most cities in the United States look at survival rates in single digits. Cities that have every right to feel pretty good about themselves look at survival rates in the teens or low twenties. And there is exactly one major urban center in this entire United States I'm aware of that has a better survival rate than Oklahoma City and Tulsa, and that's Seattle, King County. But to put that in perspective, I had the privilege of attending a resuscitation training academy in Seattle, King County about three months ago. And literally when I walked in the door, the faculty of that academy said, "We have no idea what somebody from Oklahoma City and Tulsa is doing here. I'm not sure we can teach you anything. In fact, you should be having your own academy inviting students from all around the world, and this faculty will help you set that up." And so that's not a testament to me, ladies and gentlemen. That's a testament to the 3,700 men and women in the city and the support that you give them as our government leaders. And so to conclude my remarks, I'll certainly be open for any questions you may have. The budget that's before you this year, again, it just establishes the independence of the physician medical oversight of this system. It does not incur any additional money in any way, shape, or form, other than budgets that you already will have approved from the fire departments and from IMSA. And so this is not additional money. This is just money that's specifically set aside for the physician medical oversight and support of our system, which represents only 1.2% of the IMSA budget and a very small amount of the fire department budget. I'm happy to present it to you. I absolutely assure you that my staff works diligently each and every day, realizing that every single dollar is tax money, and we don't spend it lightly. And again, I just want to appreciate, I want to thank you in appreciation for your support of our EMS system. Certainly happy to take any questions you may have this morning.
Last year, we were presented data that indicated that our fire department was arriving at the scene first about 84% of the time. Do you think that's still true this year?
That number seems a little high to me, to be honest. I have not looked at the first arrival statistics in a little while. One of the things that we have worked very closely with the fire department in in the last 12 to 18 months is they aren't going on as many calls as they did at one point because of the dispatch query system we have. It's a very elegant, scientifically validated system of caller inquiry, where when you call and you say, "I need an ambulance. I need medical help," there's actually about 1,300 different ways to codify that request. And that seems like a tremendously complex process, but it speaks to how well-trained and efficient our emergency medical dispatchers are. There's a very straightforward, computer-generated process to ask those questions, and then based on the perceived acuity of that particular response, then that prompts us whether to send fire department resources as well. And keep in mind, sometimes folks that aren't as familiar with our EMS system may question if we have a duplicate service between the fire department and IMSA, and the missions are not competitive. The missions are quite complementary. And the goal of that fire department response, which the Oklahoma City Fire Department does extremely well, is to get resources there in a very timely manner, make some initial patient assessment, make some initial patient stabilization, and try to free themselves up from that scene as soon as possible to be immediately available again in their first-end district. And so that's the advantage of having these strategically placed fire stations around town, so that we have that component of our system and the system status management plan of the IMSA ambulances where they're constantly roving based on some perceived where the next call might be based on some historical controls. So I can't comment this morning with certainty on what percent the fire department gets there first or second, but I will tell you the way the system is structured does work very well, and I think it's working better today than it ever has because of more selective call query.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Goodlow? Ed? Yeah, I think we'll look at 8i, 2, 3, 4, and 5 later. But we'll go ahead and if it's okay, I'll look for a motion on item 8i1, which would approve the budget that he's just presented to us now. Okay? All right. Comments or questions here? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you for your time.
We're on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for June 18th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for June 11th. We have a motion and a second on the journal. Are there any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, several this morning, starting on the consent docket on page 16, page 16, item 6AR. That item should be a concurrence item and not an approve item, so we'll strike that today and bring it back in a couple of weeks as an approval item. I'm sorry, as a concurrence item. So it should have been on the concurrence docket, not on the consent docket. Moving on to page 31, item 8e. That's an ordinance, and there are some minor corrections to this ordinance, so we'd like to clean those up, and we'll bring that up for reintroduction on that in a couple of weeks. So I'd like to strike again on page 31, item 8e. And then on page 33, under item 8G1A, 4107 South Agnew, who has to that be stricken. The owner's repaired. Item H, 2118 Northwest 15th Street, who has to that be stricken. There's a new owner. Item K, 1109 Northeast 21st, who has to that be stricken, where rework for rubble and debris. And item L, 3813 Northwest 26th, who has to that be stricken. The owner has removed. Then moving to page 34, under unsecured, item 8HI. Item C, 13224 Cloverleaf Lane, who has to that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 3301 North McKinley, asks that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 2143 West Park Place, who has to that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item O, 1816 Terrace Lawn Drive, who has to that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Q, 3206 Northwest 12th Street, who has to that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item T, 174445 Northeast 14th Street, who has to that be stricken, where rework is dilapidated. Item U, 2118 Northwest 15th Street, who has to that be stricken. There's a new owner. Item W, 2204 Northeast 18th Street, who has to that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item W, 2204 Northeast 18th, has to that be stricken. Owner secured. Item Z, 4433 Northwest 20th Street, who has to that be stricken. That's now occupied. Item double B, 2805 Northeast 25th Street, who has to that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item double R, 3816 Northeast 141st Street, who has to that be stricken. That is now secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Comments or questions on the MFA?
Your Honor, I've got a minor question on MFA-C. This is a report on engineering efforts to look at adding a center lane, I think, to the project, and they said it wasn't cost-effective. And how do they determine whether a center lane is cost-effective? I think determining what the cost is is pretty easy. It's 20% more to pavement, plus maybe additional curb work. And how do they, what do they balance that against to come up with this cost-effectiveness?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I missed the question.
This is on MFA-C, and we had an amendment to an engineering contract, and they were looking at a, I gathered a center lane for turning purposes, and they, it was an increase of $25,000, and they said it wasn't cost-effective. And I understand how they determine the cost of the center lane or additional paving, but what did they balance that against and see whether it's cost-effective or not?
So again, I think as a part of the design process, some questions came up in the middle of the design. What would it take to do a fifth lane, to do that center turn lane with the two opposing lanes? And so they did do a design, weighed that with the right-of-way cost, they weighed that with the material costs, and I don't recall what the differential was, but it was quite extensive, an overall increase in the project. And since this being a 2007 GeoBond, we weren't able to afford that cost difference. But we went ahead and had them do the engineering to confirm that. So with that said, I mean, we did the analysis. This is a contract amendment to pay the engineer for the work performed in the analysis.
So our comparison was the actual cost of the highway or the additional lane against what was in the GeoBond project?
Yes, and we were, I guess, optimistic that there may have been enough funds in the GeoBond proposition to cover that cost, but there aren't.
That's, to me, that's a little different than cost-effective, but it's a cost result, and I understand what you're saying.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the MFA?
Your Honor, I have a general question. And throughout this whole agenda, we're being asked to approve the renewal of pricing agreements, which I think is fine. However, some of them talk about price being the same, some of them don't mention price. And I would hate to think we would approve a renewal agreement that called for an increase in price, but I'd like to hear that, confirm that thought.
It really depends upon the contract. Some of the contracts have built into them inflationary adjustments that were approved in the original contract, and others do not. And so we, staff evaluates that as we bring those back. And so the ones that specifically don't have an adjustment that aren't required, we try to note that on each one. The other ones, a lot of those, they had those within the contracts that were, with inflationary adjustments were included.
It might be helpful in the future to put that information on these summary sheets.
Okay.
Whether there is a, some kind of adjustment factor.
Just to clarify that.
Or if we can try to get it at the original price, or we won't do it. Because I think we're faced with the option here of approving an amendment, renewal agreement, without having an idea what the price increase might be. So I think we need to have that information, I think, to make a decision. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Pat. Any other comments or questions on the MFA? Ready to vote? Cast your votes. MFA passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are five items. Item 8D needs to go into executive session. So why don't we look for a motion on item A, B, C, and E, and then we'll take a vote on item D to move it into executive session. Is that your motion then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The motion is to pass item A, B, C, and E. Any comments or questions here? Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. That passed unanimously. Now I want a motion on item D to move it into executive session.
Move the item to executive session.
Cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA. Good catch. Because we've moved that into executive session, I don't want to adjourn the OCPPA. I want to recess the OCPPA and then convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where there are two items.
Move the items, but I have a question, Your Honor, as well.
Okay.
On OCETA, it's a preliminary report on an analysis of some of the maintenance objectives we use to look at the improvement of the energy efficiency of our buildings. Have we set specific goals, or is it better than better? I mean, is better good enough? Have we set specific goals on what percentage increase in efficiency we would like to see in those buildings?
I don't know if we have specific goals on that or not. Marcia? There she is. Marcia, on the preliminary report on the EAT regarding the electrical analysis, have we set specific goals of efficiencies?
No. This is pretty much a co-compliance study.
A co-compliance study?
The, we maintain, under contract, 100 solid waste vehicles in this building. We've made other improvements to the solid waste site. The CNG facility's about to start up, and out of that, we've determined that for the safety of the people doing the maintenance work on our big trucks, we need about $400,000 in electrical improvements.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. All right, we have a motion. Did we get a second on the EAT?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OC-EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket?
Move the docket with individual consideration.
All right. Lots of pricing agreements and renewals due to the beginning of the 2014 fiscal year. Looks like we have some people that have signed up to speak.
We do have two presentations scheduled this morning. One is on the vacant abandoned buildings by Russell Klaus, and the other one is on Phase Two river improvements by Tim Johnson.
Okay. So the vacant and abandoned buildings is item AK. All right, well, let's hear from staff first, and then we have some people that have signed up, and we can hear from them afterwards. Russell Klaus, our planning director on item AK.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm delighted to be here today to talk to you about a study that is important to us in the way that we are able to undertake our functions in protecting the health and safety of the community, and also to neighborhoods and all property owners in the city. And I think that a lot of the audience is here today to hear this presentation because it's an issue that's of significant concern to them. And while I will present information, a lot of data and figures about the extent of the problem, I think it's really important to keep in mind that this does have a very direct and local impact on a lot of people, and that's why you see members of the audience here today. Also want to recognize Dwayne Midget and one of his staff members from Tulsa, who has come down here today to lend their support and also to hear what we have to say on this report.
Russell, do you think it would be okay if we asked everybody in the audience that was here to support this?
Sure.
Stand up so we could thank you all for being here? It's a great crowd today. Yay! Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This has been a problem for the city for a long period of time. I know that council members have heard complaints about vacant and abandoned buildings. It may be one of the things that you hear on the most regular basis. We wanted to get a more empirical understanding of what the extent of this problem was so that we could then craft solutions. As, to do that, we engaged a firm out of Salt Lake City, Christine Richmond, Richmond Consulting and GSBS, and they have been undertaking this study for the last six to eight months. I think they've done an excellent job. I think you have copies of the report. There's a lot of additional information in there that I'm going, that is not in my presentation today. And as we go forward with this, I'm looking for your direction on what we want to do next about the information I'm presenting. But I will have to come back on frequent occasions with the different elements of any program that the council may choose to pursue. Vacant abandoned buildings are a, we looked at this because we recognize that they're a significant financial burden for the city, for us, in terms of our operational costs, but they're also a significant financial burden for the neighborhoods. So that was part of the consultant's scope, was to give us that information about exactly what that cost is to us and what it is to the community. We're limited in our capacity to address all the deficiencies that we find in this report, but nevertheless, I think there's more than enough in here to act upon. All right, Jeff, I may need your help. So the, we're going to look at the problem first, and we undertook this study, as I said, to assess the extent of that. We also wanted to understand what the challenges were that are facing us in being able to address the problem. And if you wanted to characterize a, anything that we deal with, I think vacant and abandoned buildings is one of those things that you could not have designed a better system to support the prevalence of these buildings. Everything that is currently in place actually facilitates these buildings existing and remaining over the long term. The causes of vacant abandoned buildings vary across the country. It's a problem that's nationwide. Here, it's not so much due to a poor economy. I think we all agree, we have a pretty good economy. It's really due to the fact that the holding costs of these properties are so low that there is no incentive or little incentive for people to do something about those buildings. So in essence, we have a market imbalance. It's very cheap to hold on to these buildings. The report indicates that the average property tax for a vacant and abandoned building is $112 across the city. So that's less than $10 a month to be able to hold on to these buildings from a tax perspective. And when we talk about the balanced perspective here, that means that they're paying very little, they're paying little in property taxes. Those buildings, because they're vacant, do not have people in them who are paying all of the taxes that support the function of a city. So they're not paying the sales tax, the franchise fees, all the other things that support the revenues required to provide the services to the city. At the same time, they require a disproportionate response of city services. So there is more police, fire, code enforcement, animal welfare that is directed to these buildings, yet they are paying far less. In fact, they're paying nothing into our revenue stream to be able to support the services that we're paying. So they increase those public safety costs, they increase that perception in communities that there is a safety risk. And an independent survey that the school board recently did, asking principals what were the main issues that affected, that they would like to see the city address, wouldn't be surprised to see sidewalks and streetlights, but the third one of that, the top third, was vacant abandoned buildings. It's an issue because they do not want, they do not like their children walking by it, and they see those buildings as a hazard because children, being children, have a tendency to get in there. But there's also an incredible amount of criminal activity occurs in those buildings, and that is a threat to their kids. And since people are not paying taxes, obviously, or paying very few taxes, then that reduces our revenue, the sales tax, et cetera. We don't collect property taxes other than our general obligation bond, so that reduces the revenue that's provided to that, which is why we pay for all our capital improvements. And in general, it leads to neighborhood decline. And once you start that process of neighborhood decline, the more vacant abandoned buildings you get in a neighborhood, the more it pulls it down. There's a cumulative supportive effect there. It's sort of a virtuous bad cycle, pulls that neighborhood down, and then it's really hard to pull it back together again. So what we want to do with this, with this program is to correct this market imbalance and make it a fairer process where everybody's paying their fair share. You can still own a vacant and abandoned building if you so wish, but you should pay the full cost of that. And if we can correct that balance, then we should be able to improve property values across the city, to revitalize neighborhoods, to restore the property rights of the people who are affected by these buildings. These are the people who live near or adjacent to these buildings because their property rights are being negatively impacted, and then to increase funding in general and public In essence, these buildings are receiving a lot of benefit, but they're externalizing all their costs. And so you can see the extent of these costs, and I'm going to come back to these numbers. But when we look at that negative impact on the adjoining properties to these buildings, that equates to a $2.7 billion depreciation of property value in the community as a whole. And it's, that's probably a conservative estimate because they're not taking into account multifamily. That's just a single-family calculation. The cost to us in terms of additional city services for police, fire, and animal welfare equates to about $6.5 million a year. That's a disproportionate cost. That's the extra, above and beyond the average, that is going to address these buildings. And then we have a loss of revenue with people who are not paying sales tax and other fees to the city. And, you know, while I'm looking at only the cost to the city, it's important to recognize that there are costs to other taxing jurisdictions. The county is losing money. We did not calculate that amount. We know the schools are losing money to the tune of about $15 million across the city. So there are lots of other negative impacts to other taxing entities in the city. So there are lots of other negative impacts to other taxing entities in the city. This map illustrates the general distribution of vacant abandoned buildings in the city. The red, I know this is really hard for the audience to see, but this report will be available on our website later. But the darker red color indicates where you've got the strongest concentrations of vacant and abandoned buildings. And then, if you want to go to the next one, Jeff, you can see that there's a really solid concentration unfortunately in Ward Six, Seven, lower part of Ward Two, and the upper part of Ward Four and Ward Five. These are distributed across the city that can cause the same kind of negative impact no matter where they are, but obviously, when you concentrate them, you exacerbate that negative impact. Of the 12,000, over 12,000 buildings that we determined to be vacant and abandoning, and that was determined based on utilities data, OGNB data, and U.S. Postal Service data, of that 12,000, 25% have been vacant between six and 12 months, 19% between one and two years, 33% between two and five years, and then 22% greater than five years. So more than 55% have been vacant longer than two years. So it seems as though it's not just a failure to be able to move the property in the market, that there's some other factor there that is keeping those buildings vacant for that period of time. And then 71% of those vacant abandoned buildings are single-family homes, 26% are multifamily. And if you combine those, that gives you a total number of vacant housing units in the city of 27,000. So there are 27,000 vacant housing units in the city because so many of those are multifamily. Only 3% are commercial, but nevertheless, that's a significant issue for the commercial broker industry, and we have representatives from that sector here today as well. We've been conversing with them. This is a huge issue for them. It affects their ability to be able to sell property and to be able to market and to be able to receive what is the true market value for that property. When we calculated what the additional demand for services is, this is really the nexus of how we would move forward with a fee structure to correct the market. There is 190% higher demand for police services that are generated by blocks that have a vacant and abandoned building on it, an 84% higher response for fire services, and 115% higher demand for animal welfare. By far, the highest cost factor here is with police and fire. But nevertheless, there are these other demands on our services as well. There's a couple of examples of what I was talking about in terms of the depreciated value. Here you have two residences immediately adjacent to each other. These are on 16th Street, northeast, northwest 16th Street. The one on the left has been vacant for 10 years. It is paying 10 cents per square foot in taxes. The occupied property next door, which is paying for those additional services that the vacant building is generating, is paying a dollar in taxes per square foot. And recognize that there's a depreciation of that property value, so they're actually paying less taxes than they would if all the buildings in that particular area were occupied. And the next example is the Walcourt Building on northeast 13th Street, sort of the poster child for the program. They're paying four cents a square foot. That building has been vacant for 37 years. There's an issue with the county appraisal process where they assess that building as salvaged. They don't believe that that building is recoverable, so they've assessed it only at salvage value, meaning it's the value of the land. So they're only paying four cents a square foot. Now, it's not a salvage building because an infinite number of developers who have tried to acquire that building over time have been unable to do so. So they are incentivized to keep that building vacant, and it has a negative impact on the neighborhood around it. So when we talked about that lost value for neighboring property, we determined that anything within 150 feet of a vacant and abandoned building is being devalued up to 29%. You get out a little further, between 300 and 600 feet, you're at 12% loss. What that equates to in a medium-priced, single-family home in the city is a loss between, putting it in real dollar values here, between $18,000 and $43,000. So that's a very significant effect if you happen to be living next to a property that has been vacant for a long period of time. There are tangible and intangible negative impacts, but I think it's pretty obvious to say that vacant abandoned buildings are not a benign issue. They affect us in many different ways. The $6.5 million that we're spending on police and fire, and the loss of revenues that I've already talked about, and then the added cumulative effect of people not paying taxes. Those people are living somewhere else, they're also tapping into infrastructure that we're having to duplicate in a lot of cases because we provided the infrastructure here, it's not being utilized, and if they move somewhere else, then obviously, we have to pay for that as well. So what do we do about this? I think there are a lot of different options, and this is where I intend to come back on several occasions, but I think the question we need to ask ourselves today is whether it's equitable for responsible members of the community to be paying taxes and to actually be paying for these buildings to look like this year after year. As we move forward, I do want to stress that it would not be our intent to go after every building that's vacant and abandoned. There are various reasons why buildings are in this condition. We would have to craft a series of exemptions to allow for the different circumstances in people's lives that lead these buildings to be in this situation. But there are some that have been vacant and abandoned for a very long time, and I think those are the ones we would want to target, the worst-performing buildings and the worst-performing districts. So there are three steps to this. The first would be the establishment of a vacant building registry. This is based on best practice from other communities. The intent here is to be preemptive so that we can understand exactly where these buildings are, we can take action to ensure that these buildings do not end up in a worse position. And then the next two steps, I'm going to talk about in a minute, those are going to require statutory change. That's where we're going to need legislative change to be able to be effective. To have a fully effective program, we're going to have to do the cost recovery piece, and we're going to have to do the land bank piece. And so those are the options that I will want to bring back to you in the future. On the vacant abandoned building register, the consultant is saying that for this program to be effective, that you would look at up to three inspections per year, you'd need support staff to maintain the database, equipment and supplies to be able to go out and assess the scale of the situation. And I'll be looking to you to determine how aggressive we want to be with this. Without the cost recovery piece, it's likely that we're going to have to subsidize this because we do not expect 100% recovery. We've determined that, based on the 12,000 buildings across the city, to run that program with the level of inspection the consultant is recommending, that would cost about $470 for a single-family housing unit, and then a higher cost for the larger buildings, the multifamily, and the commercial. That's just the administrative fee. That's what we can do under current state law, under our authority. We can recover our administrative costs, but we presume, based on what we've seen with code enforcement, that we would not get 100% recovery, so we have to assume that there'd be at some level of subsidy there to support that, depending on how aggressive we want to be in pursuing this program. The second phase is cost recovery, and this is really where we begin to, one, provide significant disincentive for these property owners for maintaining the property in this condition, but also to be able to secure sufficient revenue to really be able to run the program at a no-cost option for the city. So where the program, in that sense, pays for itself. The reason we did this study, as I said, was we need to establish the legal nexus to be able to establish these fees, so now we understand what those costs are, we can support the establishment of fees. And those fees will vary according to the type of land use, whether it's single-family, as you just saw on that previous table, and then the length of vacancy, because there's an added cost, the longer it's vacant, the more issues, more services that it generates. So if we look at a combined fee schedule for cost recovery, this is recouping that additional, that disproportionate cost for fire and police, and you can see that that substantially increases the cost of holding a property for a multi-tenant commercial. You're looking at, after five years, of $2,500 to be able to, for us to be able to run that program and to recover the cost, the true cost of holding that property in a vacant And then the land bank is the last part of this. This is really where, this is how you solve the problem. Those first two steps are about understanding the scale of it and providing some disincentive, but this is where we actually are able to convert those buildings back into productive use. So again, we need that statutory authority to be able to acquire those most problem properties, the worst properties, those ones that need to be foreclosed on because they haven't paid liens or for other reasons that are a nuisance in the community. We have to be able to acquire those properties, maintain them in public control for a relatively short period of time, but the intent is really to get them back into private hands and productivity as quickly as possible. We would use this only as a last resort. It's not something that would be, something we would want to go out and pursue aggressively. It's just for those properties that there's no other solution to, these are the ones we would want to address. We'd also have to change statute to enable us to be able to impose liens on the property for non-payment of vacant abandoned building fees. That is not a capacity that we currently have, that would then give us the capacity. We'd also need that capacity to foreclose for failure to pay those liens. So to summarize, very substantial cost to the city, $6.5 million in terms of added public safety costs that these buildings are requiring. At the same time, as these buildings are really contributing nothing to us, so if we look at that seesaw arrangement, a lot of costs, but no revenue to compensate for that. So this is all about the market correction. And then if we look at that neighborhood impact, a huge negative impact on property values, huge negative impact on neighborhoods in general, huge negative impact on people's feelings of safety, security, willingness to reinvest in their neighborhoods. All of that is depreciated by the presence of these properties. As we move forward, next time I come back, we would be looking at, and what I'm looking for today is really whether you would like us to make the effort to pursue the legislative change that's going to be necessary to be able to do the cost recovery. And we can look at the establishment of the land bank, whether we do that all at once or we do it in stages. It is going to be a difficult battle, but as you can see from the presence of Tulsa here today, it's not our problem alone, it's everybody shares this problem, and I think that the community in general is fed up with it, and they would like to see change. A survey by the Neighborhood Alliance last year on people's attitude to this had a massively supportive response for doing something about it. So I think the support is there to do it, and fiscally, it makes sense to do, to act on it as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Pat, looks like we'll just work our way this way. Pat, and then Meg, then Pete, Larry Ed.
Thank you, Your Honor. Russell, I think you did an excellent job of defining the problem. I'm a little concerned that the solution up to the land bank part is not going to be significant enough incentive for the owner of that abandoned property to do anything about it. For instance, I was curious as to how much cents per square foot you think we might add to the cost of having that building by just collecting the fees that were associated?
I couldn't give you a square footage cost, but at the moment, if you look at that, like a single-family building where you would be then paying up to $1,500 to maintain that, if you're only paying about $100 or $200 now, then that shifts the equation quite substantially on an annual basis. We can only impose fees, and in that case, I think Dan and Kenny would agree, that that would constitute a tax if we were to do the cost recovery component of it. But we can only do that equivalent to what the cost is to us.
Would additional legislation be required just to collect our costs?
To collect?
Just our costs?
Just the administrative costs of the registry.
Okay, we would need no additional permission from the legislature?
No.
We could do that in our current law?
We can do that. But those costs, those administrative fees, which is about $450 for the single-family, which is still a lot more than what they're currently paying, that'll have some impact, but to have that true impact, we would need to do the cost recovery to provide that sufficient disincentive.
So we can't recover our costs other than just fees?
Correct.
You can only recover your costs that are related to the administration and enforcement of the actual regulations that you enact. Anything related to that can be a lease power fee.
We couldn't recover the cost of the additional public safety without some kind of change in our order.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, John?
What's the timeline on this proposal?
Well, we could move forward on the registry as soon as you direct us to. We would come back, I think we could come back in another late summer with some options on how to pursue that and how aggressive we want to do. I mentioned that we made some assumptions on cost recovery and that there may be some subsidy required as a result of the fact that we're not recovering all of the fees associated with it. It'll be, what I would like to do is to present those options and see what's, you know, what's the favor of the council as to how aggressive we are on that.
All right, thank you. Meg?
I'm delighted to see somebody here from Tulsa, and so that really was going to be my question. Does Tulsa have a similar program, and do you think we have some statewide support to be able to?
Well, Tulsa currently has a $500 fee for registering vacant abandoned buildings, but they're as equally limited as we are in terms of being able to cover the full cost of the program, the full cost of the program. So if you look across the state, obviously, if it's $6.5 million to us and disproportionate public safety costs, and across the state, it's obviously substantial. And if we were to be able to recover those costs, you could apply them in many different ways. It could go back into public safety. It could also go back into arresting neighborhood decline and reversing that, which, you know, we would advocate, it makes a lot of sense. So you'd have to, that again, would be a policy decision of the council as to how you want to do that.
Terrific presentation, Russell. Thank you.
All right, David?
Russell, with respect to those administrative fees, what's the ability to collect those? Is it just merely putting a lien on the property, or can we actually collect those currently?
Well, we currently cannot impose a lien on properties for the vacant abandoned building costs. What we could do through that inspection process is we would have, you know, those inspectors would have code enforcement capacity, so they could address the code enforcement issues, the high grass and weeds and dilapidated structures, et cetera, but we wouldn't be able to capture those fees.
What you could do now is enact an ordinance providing for registration of a vacant and abandoned building as defined in the ordinance. So then the owner would have the obligation to come in and register it. You could have regulations in there that it would be inspected, say, on a periodic basis, whatever period you thought was effective, by the fire department, the police department, and code enforcement. And then you could build in the cost of those inspections in, say, a quarterly registration fee that they would have to come in and pay. The kicker on that is the fact that if they don't come in initially to register it, then all you can really do is, that would be a code violation for not registering it, so you'd be back into the municipal court process on that of citing them for not registering the building and the complications with that.
Can we modify our ordinance to allow us to take a lien against their property if?
No, you need statutory authority for that.
Any lien on their property would take a statute.
Correct.
I'm just a little pessimistic as to the effectiveness of the program until we can actually enforce the collection of these fees.
I am as well, which is why I've already talked
I am as well, which is why I've already talked to Representative John Echols to, and he's planning on introducing a bill next session to give cities that. So, because every time we start talking about this, that's what comes up, that we don't have any power to actually disincentivize people to pay. And that seems to be the main problem. And so that's why I've, because this is extremely important to the neighborhood I live in and the neighborhoods around me. And so I'm hoping, hoping that we can get that authority so we can actually, we can actually do stuff. But I really want to thank the, whoever authorized this study, because it, I think this has given us the, it's given us the tools to make good policy. So I don't know who did that, but thank you to whoever did it. And I think the consultants did a good job of presenting, presenting the problem really well. They outlined, I think we all know what the problem is now, so that's all I got.
The, I would agree.
I think the number one concern is going to be whether we can enforce this or not. You know, our recent success with the legislature has not been very good to get them to assist us in expanding the law. One of the comments that we, the feedback that the legislative committee got from the people that represent us at the legislature is that they don't feel like they have enough time in advance of the legislative session in order to cultivate a, an understanding of what we want. And so I think if we're going to do this, it is imperative that you get whatever legislation that you, we're going to want introduced, done as soon as possible, so that we can meet with our legislative liaison people and try and get started. I mean, get started in August rather than waiting till December or January to start. And we, I don't know whether that's going to work or not, but it's, at least that's what they tell us they think would be helpful if we did it. And I think we ought to, this is a perfect example. We had, we had a bill last year, in fact, we've had one every year that I can remember that has something to do with giving us the enforcement, the right to enforce the cost of, of, of low maintenance or no maintenance or abandoned or dilapidated, and we very rarely are successful in advancing that. So we've got to try it another way. And the other way, I think, would be to get this legislation ready now, and let's meet with our legislative people and see if they can start trying to sell it before the session even starts.
What is the reason? Why do they, because it just seems like such a common sense idea to, that a city should be able to enforce their code.
Some of the feedback I get comes from this philosophy about the sanctity of personal property, of property ownership. And it gets into the philosophical arguments about whether or not a government should have the right to impose a lien on you, even if, even if what you're doing is so detrimental to the other people that live around you that's costing them thousands of dollars. This argument arises that you shouldn't have the right to control what people do. I think that's part of it right there. But I think that argument could be overcome if we get out ahead of it. And I think getting out ahead of it is, was what I'm urging. The other question I have though, with some of, with one of the things you said early on, is you talked about that the real estate taxes are a disincentive, low real estate taxes are a disincentive. I have a couple of questions about that. There are communities that have very high real estate taxes that have this problem also. I mean, big cities in the north and the northeast have huge problems, and they have tremendously high taxes. What happens there is people just walk away completely. There's more to it, I think, than just high real estate taxes.
I agree. It's a very nuanced problem. I mean, this is really just a general comparison with other parts of the country. If you look at that, at the Rust Belt, you know, it's largely because the economy has collapsed there. And so you have, you know, a much higher incidence of people walking away from the property. You look at the east and west Florida and Las Vegas and California in the last couple of years, it was a really high foreclosure issue.
Actually, walking away is a better solution than what we have now. Now, the solution is we're waiting to see where.
Well, we don't even know if people, we don't even know if people have walked away at this point.
So, but I, but I do think it's much broader than just a real estate.
I agree. We know it's a nuanced thing and.
The other thing that you raise, and I think this is something that we might, we might enter into some kind of conversations now, is with the county assessor about that, about his view, for instance, the Walcourt is a perfect example of that. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've personally had people contact me to try to figure out some way, before I got on the council this last time. I mean, it's been, it's been a hot development prospect for 25 years. Where it's located, the size of it, I mean, I, so I think we ought to open a discussion, at least with the county, to see if there's, if, if the assessor has some flexibility with what he could do. Because I think it's possible that on buildings like the Walcourt, that's just absurd, that it's, what, four cents a foot, you said?
Four cents, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's absurd. I mean, I'm telling you, the people would pay for that, there are probably people in this room that.
There are people in this room who have tried to acquire that building.
So I think, I think we, maybe open up a conversation with the assessor's office.
I agree.
About whether or not there's something that could be done there. But I can't emphasize enough my, my concern that we get a legislative program done as quickly as possible, not at the risk of not doing it right. But, but I mean, the faster we can turn around that single piece of it and sit down with our liaison folks, I think the better chance we may have of trying to make something happen.
Larry?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Russell, a couple of questions. Help me understand, make sure I'm on the correct path here. Are there two costs that we're talking about here? The administrative cost, which gets tied into the initial step one, and then the cost recovery, which is the cost down the line as far as trying to recapture the fire and the police and that. Is that correct?
Correct.
On the administrative cost today, can we not come up with a, a cost of what it will take to implement the first phase of this system and set the administrative cost per unit to cover all of those costs?
To cover all the, you mean the cost recovery?
All the administrative costs.
All the administrative, yes. I mean, that schedule is in the report.
Right. And, and if we were able to collect everything that we build, then that would not require a subsidy.
Well, that's certainly what we would aim for.
Right. Okay. And then what we cannot do, what I hear you saying is, if I, as a property owner, have a vacant piece of property and I am assessed those costs and I refuse to pay it, you cannot come at me as a city and file a lien against my property for non-payment today.
Correct.
The, about, no, you can't. You might be able to do it as a public nuisance. You might be able to have a whole registration ordinance and say they must register and they must pay these fees to register, et cetera, and then declare it a public nuisance if they fail to register. And then, but then you still have to go to district court to attempt to recover your costs, and then that's at the discretion of the judge over there.
So I don't have the same, I'm in a different ballgame. I think my citizens don't understand this too. If you don't pay your water bill, we shut off your water.
Right.
But in this case, if you don't pay the administrative cost, a component right here, we really are limited in what we can do to force the individual to pay that.
Correct.
One is we're limited in what we can assess against the property, but more, more so, we're limited in the fact that we can't foreclose the lien to collect the money. So it's a double-edged sword. We can, we can put the, even if we have a way, and we have some instances where we can put liens against property, but we still can't collect it. We still can't enforce the lien because this legislative authority is not there to do it, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I mean, lien collection, collection is an issue now with code enforcement. I mean, we don't, we have a pretty low rate of return on that, on that basis. So we would need to have a more aggressive approach with this if we're going to make it work.
I mean, and conclude my comments with this then. From my perspective, and what I think I'm representing here, the perspective of Ward Three residents, they are quote "fed up" unquote with these vacant properties. They're fed up with me, if you will, because I don't have the power to force somebody to make it go from vacant to occupied or tear it down. So I would like to suggest, as you go forward, I don't know what the sentiment of the rest of the council is, but to go as aggressively as we can, as fast as we can, even though we're only talking with this registry of the preliminary steps, and that doesn't resolve the problem. If we don't take those steps and make them as aggressive and as, and as good as possible while we're pursuing the options with the legal aspect from the state, we'll never get any place. So I think we ought to start, and we may not get any place, but at least we're starting. And a journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step, and I think we ought to take that step as soon as, and make it as big a step as we can. Thank you for your report, and thank you to consultants.
Ed?
I certainly echo Larry's thoughts there. I would, I think it's important, as you talked about costs, to point out that no matter how much you would increase the property tax on these properties, that money is not going to the city to pay for services like police, fire, what. This is the only state in America in which property, the cities have no access to property tax to pay for city services in, through their general fund. So as we're talking to legislators, and I want to recognize Representative Floyd, and I appreciate her presence, but as we're talking to legislators who are working in our legislative committee, doesn't this give us more evidence of the need that maybe Oklahoma should no longer be the only state, such an outlier, the only state in America that doesn't allow cities access to property tax to help pay for some of these services? Isn't this the evidence that, that, of this disproportionate cost?
Well, there's clearly a disconnect between who's paying for those services and where the revenues are going that are collected from the property.
So even as we spend this money and subsidize this money to solve the problem and then increase property tax, that money goes to the county and others. What would be the role potentially for the county in stepping in and helping to solve this problem?
Well, you know, it's in the county's interest as well. Obviously, there's a huge deficit. If people are paying 10 cents or less for, for those properties, that's a huge loss of revenue for them to support their operating costs, plus all the other taxing jurisdictions. So the schools, as I mentioned, with the vote text and the libraries, I mean, everybody's losing out on this deal, in addition to us, because, you know, we've got the millage on the general obligation bond, so we're losing about $5 million a year on that alone. So that's additional money that we would be able to provide in paying off the GO bonds.
So would there be a role for county government to work, work with us?
Yes, absolutely. They would have to be, they'd have to be a partner on this.
My, my understanding is that more than 20% of these owners are out of state?
I'm not sure what the, is it, yes.
How does that, I mean, how does that influence enforcement? And even if you got state legislative change, how can you serve necessarily out-of-state owners?
You know, I, I think we'd wrestle with the answer for that for a long period of time. I mean, Kenny might be able to better address that, but it's obviously a problem. I think it's a problem that we all struggle with. I know Representative Floyd and I discussed this, and, you know, we talked about that as an option, about targeting those, some way to be able to better address those property owners. If we do establish the, the cost recovery and then the process of acquiring the problem properties, we could get to that eventually. It's not going to solve the problem of deterioration in the meantime, to the degree that we would like, but we would at least in the end be able to address those, those worst properties.
It's not a catch-all. There is no catch-all available at this point in time. There are good property owners out there and bad property owners, and we've got bad property owners that are delinquent with the properties, and what we're trying to do is help encourage them to be more responsible with the properties. This is a small step. With some legislative action, we can maybe take a larger step. But even with the legislative action, there's still going to be people that are going to ignore us, and it's going to be, it's going to be difficult for us to enforce against.
You'll, you'll never close the loop on everything, but certainly we could make progress, because at this point in time, there's really nothing in the way of people maintaining vacant abandoned buildings.
Okay.
One more comment. The out-of-state question only is relevant in relation to trying to enforce the antiquated laws we have now. It wouldn't matter where they lived if we had the right to enforce the law against the House. We don't. And that, so the out-of-state question just makes it difficult for, for Russell or Charles and the folks that are trying to enforce their current law. But under current, if they lived in Timbuktu, it wouldn't matter if you had the right to put a lien against the House and foreclose it, you could do it right here in Oklahoma County, and it'd be done.
I think as part of, part of a full program, you would need the legis, you'd need the, the legal assistance in there to be able to help with clearing title. I mean, we're going to have disincentives by added cost, but we're also going to need to, I think, provide some incentives which could be covered through a cost, cost recovery revenues to be able to support those properties that are encumbered with complicated title.
There's some people that have signed up to speak. Did you want to say something, Ken?
I was just going to say on the point that Russell just made there, if you had the lien process go through the county treasurer's office like our dilapidated and weed liens do now, that ends up with, they either pay the lien or it ends up with a tax sale. And at the tax sale, all the parties with interest should get notice, and then that extinguishes them, and then the new owner takes it free and clear. So that, if you do it through the tax process, if you went to district court to foreclose a lien, then you have to name all those parties and deal with their interests.
All right. Russell, thank you.
You're.
We have four people that have signed up to speak. We're going to allow three minutes maximum each of them. Thanks, Walter. We will need your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilman Walter Jacks. I live at 4832 Kelch Drive. I've brought some slides to go through. I'm going to do this very, very quickly. I think I can do this in about two and a half minutes once they're passed out.
Okay.
I'd like to say while I'm passing them out, I really appreciate Mr. Klausner, Planning Department, having this study done. I appreciate, I support it fully in all aspects. I support the, the building registry and the cost recovery and the land bank. And I hope that we can proceed as quickly and as aggressively as possible, like Councilman McAtee and Shadid have said. In the first slide, first color slide, you see some before and after photos. I just wanted to illustrate what a difference it makes in cleaning up a single boarded-up property. This is on Northeast Eighth Street in Ward Seven. I run an adopt a street program there, and it's very aggressive, but I want to put a human face on this issue using Northeast Eighth Street. If you flip very quickly, the next slide shows the owner of this property. This couple actually owns over 200 more residential properties in Oklahoma City, many of them in the same condition. The next slide, you see on the upper left photo something that looks like a cave made out of cement. That is a garage on a lot that doesn't have a home on it. It's an abandoned, it's a vacant lot. That lot, if you look at it in the lower right-hand photo, is on a sidewalk in a school zone where schoolchildren pass by it every day of the school year. I don't think any of you would want your schoolchildren passing by that lot, but I've passed by it for 18 years, and it's been in that state. You can see a shot of photo in the upper right looking inside of that building. There's a blanket in there, there's some booze bottles, obviously some undesirable characters inhabit it. The next slide is a vacant lot, also on Northeast, all of this is on Northeast Eighth Street. This lot appears to be owned by somebody, as far as I can tell, who's been dead for 30 years. And the other co-owners who are on the county assessor's registry have no idea who that person is, so they cannot achieve a disposition of that property. They can't do anything with it. So I think the public may need some help with that issue. If you flip about three more slides, it should be a map. This section of Northeast Eighth Street, we just looked at in three blocks of Northeast Eighth Street, this really has two levels of importance to me. I try to keep it safe for schoolchildren to get to school at Douglas High School. It's constantly a wreck. What this also is, is the welcome mat to the Health Science Center for anybody coming off of I-35 down 10th Street. In those three blocks between, I want to say it's between Jordan and Kate Avenue, there are eight boarded-up buildings, and there are 16 vacant lots. On the final slide, there is a map that highlights those properties. In yellow are the boarded-up buildings, and circled in red are the vacant lots. So this is a, this is a horrible problem. That neighborhood is just disintegrating, and we need to pursue this issue as aggressively and as quickly as possible. and as quickly as possible. I don't know what's going to become of it if we don't. Thank you.
Walter, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Pettis.
Georgie Rasko? Morning, Georgie.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us here today. Georgie Rasko, 2206 Northwest 17th Street. I'm the executive director of Neighborhood Alliance. I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know, that neighborhoods typically organize under two reasons. First one and foremost is crime, crime going on, they're going to get together and try to fight it. Secondly is code violations, which includes vacant and abandoned buildings. The typical neighborhood resident, the typical Oklahoma City citizen, looks at those vacant and abandoned buildings in their neighborhood, and when they call and report them, or they talk to you as their councilperson, then they go off away shaking their head, thinking, my city is just ineffectual. Nobody cares about me and my neighborhood. All they're going to do is continue to build and look at big business, but they don't care about me. But you know, and all of us today know from sitting here and listening to this presentation, it is not a simple solution. It is a very, very difficult one, and one that we all have to grapple with. But we implore you and beg of you to look at this aggressively. This could be your year. This could be the year that you really looked at something, whether you come out the other end with a complete solution or not. Nonetheless, I think the residents of Oklahoma City deserve to hear you say, we are not going to ignore this. We are really going to research it. We realize it's a multifaceted solution with lots of different prongs to it, but we're not going to ignore it, and we're going to continue to support Russell and his team in whatever he needs to try to look at this. We're going to continue to bring it up as a council. We're going to continue to look at solutions, and we're going to find some things that are going to work. And I know that you can. I have full faith in every one of you here, that we're going to be able to do something to be able to curb this problem in some way. So thank you very much in advance for looking into it.
Thanks, Georgie. Shannon Rundell?
Shannon Rundell, 431 Northwest 20th, and I'm here representing a group that we started in February. It is the Historic Preservation Alliance. It's all nine historic preservation neighborhoods. Every neighborhood leader, the presidents of all neighborhoods are with us. We're having 30 and 40 people meeting once a month. We are strongly behind this. We are all in Ward 2 or Ward 6, so we're Ed or Meg's, and, but I think on that map you could see, along with Ward 7, we really have a high concentration. Many of us came to these inner-city neighborhoods 20, 30 years ago, still frustrated. Mr. McAtee, thank you. You know, we're just all frustrated because we've worked on this, we've all been active neighborhoods. We all thought, when we came under Historic Preservation Ordinance, we might have a little bit stronger code enforcement. We're fighting the same vacant houses, and particularly the two neighborhoods just north of 23rd are, you know, they have one group, I think in Jefferson Park, one man owns 30 properties. They've been wrestling with him for years, and it just doesn't go anywhere. So we're fully behind this. We have a couple of people, Meg and Ed, that are very sophisticated on the legislative process, ask for help, and they'll help. We all will.
All right. Thanks, Shannon. Pan Barton-Stoger?
Good morning. My address is 11113 Burning Oaks, Oklahoma City. I sat on a horseshoe in a neighboring city back in 1998 with this same issue. And the way that we addressed this is we did not allow any boarding up of any kind of property other than a commercial business. If you did this, got rid of the ability for them to board these houses up, you're down to 3% by your report. In doing that, you require them to take the boards down, have windows in the property, keep the windows maintained. It'll raise the value of the properties. It will put money back into your economy for them buying the supplies to do it. It makes the house look occupied instead of dilapidated and worn down. So I would encourage you all to consider looking at the ordinance that is in a neighboring city that took this on, that aggressively pursued it in allowing the residents six to 12 months to get these houses unboarded and done. It works, and it cleans it up, and it prevents some of the issues that you've addressed in this, prevents you going through the fines. If they don't do it, you have the ability, go in and do it for them, take your lien procedure and go forward with that. But it does work, and we were very successful in getting those areas cleaned up. So I would encourage you to look at that as an alternative.
Is this in Oklahoma?
Yes, it was in Midwest City.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, the item this morning is to receive the Addressing Vacant and Abandoned Buildings in Oklahoma City Report, and then it's also to direct staff to develop a vacant building registry ordinance. And then I think staff has also received side directions from the council to go forward with legislative issues, develop a legislative issue to take forward.
And I think our legislative issues effort ought to go so far to drafting a piece of legislation, because once we send it out there, it's going to get changed. And the stronger our legislation is, it gives us a tool to work with, educating the legislators.
And I agree with that. I actually live across the street from a abandoned vacant two-and-a-half-story house that has been vacant and abandoned for more than 30 years. So I know personally what it's like to come out of my house and boom, there's this big old giant house in front of me that's been vacant and abandoned for more than 30 years.
Yeah, and I'll just remind those interested in this topic today that if and when we get this in front of the legislature, we're going to need you contacting your legislators. You'd be surprised how much impact you can have. Sometimes we think we don't have much, but the masses can speak loudly on this issue. And I think that would be necessary if we're to get this, because it won't be an easy thing to accomplish. Anything else on this topic? All right. We appreciate everyone who's come down here today and supporting our city staff and their efforts. Because we have a lot of agenda to go, and I'm assuming you all don't want to stick around for it, I'm going to give you a few seconds to get up and leave the room, and then we'll resume the meeting. You're welcome. All right, we'll continue with the meeting now. We're still in the consent docket, and Engineer Tim Johnson is here to give us an update on Phase 2 of a river project. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you for inviting me to make this brief presentation on an update of the Phase 2 portion of the river projects. It is on the heels of the lighting of the river. It's kind of exciting to be a part of that. This project will include the total list of things that were included in this map's three item, or 13, one of which has already been purchased. That's the starting gates, and they're in use. The other 12, the first of those that we're going to try and bid as an independent item are the floating items, so that they can use it in an October venue. That'll be the judge, the judging platforms and the starting floating docks. The rest of the items are a series of various additives to what's going on down there, LED lighting, cable crossover markers, starting towers and timing huts, utility infrastructure, which is why we need the river down to install some of this construction, the timing displays, the gateway enhancements, which will be signage, weight-finding signage, the additional video cameras, a new access ramp to the river. We've added a storage building as an alternate bid because of the important items that they have purchased need to be stored safely. And then we've also added electrical transformer screens, and we're winding that into the signage portion of the project. Those of you who've been down there, you've seen the big OGNB green transformers standing above ground about four feet. We're going to put screening on that that will blend with the metalwork that we're using for our signage. This is just an overall map of the, where the towers will be. We've got starting towers and a finish line tower that are for the judges. They'll be on the south bank. There's actually one not shown on here. There'll be six total. We've added one at the 200-meter mark, which is a popular kayaking race start. When we're all done, the albino cabling system, which is a system of cables that lie below the water surface and are anchored in the river bottom, they're at one and a half meters below the surface, so it allows boats to come across and safely go up and down and across these markers. However, there is concern because of the existing system that's there, keeping it safe from the floods, similar to what we just had. So we've designed a safety system to allow for debris to be caught upstream and taken to the shoreline before it comes across this area. The wayfinding signage and entry markers, it's a little hard to read this, but the six red dots are a combination of wayfinding signs along 6th Street to the various buildings and venues. That's going to be a combination of the covers for the transformers that I mentioned. The two purple signs are large signs that'll be at the main gateway areas. And then the type D signage is, will bring people from under the new bridge and canal connection to the river up into the boathouse district. This is a sample of the signage. We actually studied six different signs. It's a little hard to see on this image, but we're picking up on the angled materials that are on the site. You know, everything down there is a triangular shape and at a certain angle, and we've worked with the master planner as part of the boathouse plan and coordinated some of the signage This is an example of what the starting towers will look like. This, again, on the south bank. We are pushing them as close as we can to the floodway to allow for a open area behind them. There's very little space to work between the top of the riprap and where the utilities lie and the transformers lie for the new lighting project. So the coaches through the stakeholders down there have talked about trying to maintain some clearway, five feet wide, to allow for coaches to ride along on a car or on a bicycle as the teams row. This will obviously be required to get approval through FEMA and Corps of Engineers and the, with the city's review. These are lightweight structures made of material that'll be similar to the screening that's going in, the windscreen, and it'll be backlit on the letters, probably blue. The structures will be white, and up in the top of the structure is where the cameras will be that'll actually continue to watch the race as it comes down the river. That's a top view. Couple more views in here. That's what it'll look like from the north bank looking south, so you can see where you are, what meter mark you are, and that's where the judges will be. We've been working with the actual crews that install the gateway system and the starting gates into the river, and we've come up with a single ramp design. We were looking at four different ramp locations, backed it off to a single ramp design that is much longer than the original design, but much flatter. This allows them to install all the pieces of the gate in one piece, connect them, make sure everything's working before they push them out into the water. The, in the bottom of this image is where the proposed alternate bid for a storage building would go, tucked in behind some cedars, as far away from the bank as we can get it on city property. The next image shows the trees that are there. You can see there's a heavy dense grove of cedars there. We're going to try and tuck that building back, and it'll, it won't look bad, but it's not going to look like some of the artistic architecture that's down there. And then finally, the budget at this point in our design, we feel real good about the budget. Our remaining, our total budget was just under $4.5 million. With the items we've estimated so far, along with some design contingency, we're a couple hundred thousand below that. We think that there are some room to gain some additional funds out of our LED lighting to allow for the storage building, and then the same thing with our signage. We're going to wind in that electrical transformer covers into our signage package. So we think we're going to accomplish these alternates, but we're going to leave them as alternates in the bid. One of the items with regard to the LED lighting, we've been talking to the people along the river with the tall lights that are down there. The original concept was to put LED lights up the length of the light tower, but in dealing with maintenance issues on LED lights, we think that that's a little bit going to be difficult to maintain because of the height of the tower. So we're coming up with some alternates that would actually save us some money. We'll put them on the starting towers and some active lighting there. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Tim? Pat?
Tim, I trust you're working very closely with OGNB on their enclosures, so they'll have access to that equipment in case they have to do some emergency repairs on it.
Yes, we have talked to them. We've given them the spacing they've asked for, and they're on board with this screen.
John?
I had the great privilege this past weekend to be a part of the light, the river light, and to see thousands of people in attendance for the light, and also to watch the races were outstanding.
Meg?
If I could, Tim, I think this is slightly off-subject, but I had the privilege of taking a river cruise the other night with Oklahoma City beautiful, and I was inquiring about the connection and the work being done. And I understand we've got a couple of issues with regard to the height of the sidewalks or the landings.
With regard to the river canal connection?
To make the connection. Can you give me an update on where we are on that and the timing?
This has been worked out with the contractor, and he's in the process of finalizing the sidewalk pores to make the connection under the bridge. And we're asking to lower the water in the river about a foot and a half to allow us to finish the cap on the roundabout that's north of the bridge. Our anticipated finish date is early August. We're hoping to have the sidewalk open by, to allow for pedestrian connectivity in the third week of July, because there's an event down there around the 23rd, I think.
Right, and this includes the grading of the ADA?
Yes.
Ramp that will come down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sooner rather than later. We don't want to open it at the end of the summer.
We're pushing hard on the contractor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Ray, to vote the consent docket?
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions in regards to item 6H4, 6Y11, and 6CA.
Okay, hold on just a second. Pat?
Question on 6H4 also. John's probably going to preempt me. On 6Y1 and 2S.8, AN, and AP, and AO, and AS.3. Just minor questions, they shouldn't be complicated.
All right.
And if I could, Mayor, I just wanted to mention something briefly, and it's 6CE.
AX.
Is that it? All right. John, you want to get started with the H4?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a simple question as it relates to 6H4. Can we not use this material for wraparound for the creek beds and lining? Can we not use this material for wraparound for the creek beds and lining?
Whether we can use waste concrete for riprap? We can waste asphalt. I don't think we can because of the oil content in it. So you're asking if?
Yes, my question was, could we not just recycle that material in some of those creeks and beds where we are having trouble with, where we can just put it along the different linings?
I'm not sure what this contract's for. I mean, what specifically is this? It's waste concrete and asphalt disposal, so it is. I think we're disposing it in an area where, well, go ahead.
This was for Public Works and Utilities with some of their construction contracts. Prior to this, we were able to dispose of the surplus at no charge, and then they were going to start charging us, so we did a bid to make sure we got the best price. And Eric may be able to talk a little bit more about.
Eric, oh, you're, yeah.
Thank you, Councilman. We have, we obviously repair streets, and Utilities has certain emergency work that requires us to take up pavements, and obviously disposing of those, if we can recycle, we'd like to. We do have some contractors locally that recycle that concrete, where they at least allow us to dispose it. And Amy was correct. In this last year, we were approached that we were no longer going to be able to be offered that for free, so there was a competitive bid process just to ensure that we could do that, and that's what this item is today. It allows us to continue to dispose of it properly with contractors that bid that. We, from time to time, do use that for riprap, especially on city services contracts. It's not as tightly, so it's not used as often as, say, a rock material, but we use it. The county uses it from time to time in some of our more rural areas. We obviously have more than we can use.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
May I ask my question also? We took the second bid on this one, second. We didn't take the lowest bid because the low bidder couldn't comply with our hauling constraints. And I'm just curious, how much are we paying Schwartz to do this work on a per ton basis?
I didn't get the last part of your question about Schwartz.
How much are we paying Schwartz to do this work?
$2.45.
So we can't haul it to them for $1.45?
I just don't know the answer to that without discussing that with them, so I defer to the selection process that we had to identify them as the lowest, most responsible. So.
It's the second bidder that got my attention on this one, and I'm just curious what kind of economic evaluation we did.
I would be happy to re-review that and bring that back to you. Again, I think that the recommendation day is one that just follows our procurement process.
I have no problem with it. I'm just curious, this is the pricing aspect of it.
Okay. John?
And then?
Y11?
Y11, can we defer this until August the 13th, which will allow me more time to look at this item?
Well, this will become, this is not before, this is just introduction today.
This introduction?
Yeah, it'll come before council on, what day, Bob?
July 30th.
July 30th.
Okay, thank you. And 6CA?
Budget with the maps for kids?
Yes. I have some concerns as it relates to two schools that are in Ward 7, one being Moon and the other one being Northeast Academy. As it relates to Moon, on July the 2nd, 2008, the Oklahoma City Public Schools decided that they were going to close Moon down. And they did put in a request to defer, to redirect $4.7 million for that money to be allocated for three other schools. Now, Oklahoma City Public School has decided to keep that school open. But however, they have decided to keep the school open without the $4.7 million that is needed for improvement. They have gone through and put on a roof and made some changes to the school. But however, I do have some strong concerns as it relates to security issues at the school. Then, second of all, as it relates to the second floor, that school is not ADA compliant. If on the second floor of Moon is Kip Preparatory School. So if Kip has a student or a parent or staff member with a disability, they have no way getting to the second floor, because there is no elevator nor is it a lift to get them up to the second floor. So I have some strong concerns about that. Then, third of all, the conditions of the bathrooms on the second floor. You have, for example, in the boys' bathroom and the girls' bathroom on the second floor, you have a row of toilet stools but no doors. Students have to use the bathroom, again, out in the open. No doors, anything in those bathrooms. So I want to have a real discussion with the trust and also Oklahoma City Public Schools, their intent for that school. Again, they decided to defer $4.7 million away from that school, decided to keep it open without making a necessary improvement. Would you want to send your child to a school where in the bathrooms, again, you have a row of toilet stools but no doors? That's ridiculous.
Councilman, what we have is an implementation plan that was approved by this council, by the school district, and by the school trust, and we're finishing that implementation plan. It's correct that, yes, $4.7 million was taken out of that plan when the thought was that Moon was going to be closed. Since going to that, the school district changed their minds. They know that there are capital needs that need to be done over there. Superintendent indicated to me that they were going to put some improvements for Moon into the next bond issue.
See, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, to me, next bond issue does not cut it. It will not fix the problem for right now. Kids have to go into that bathroom, again, use the bathroom with no privacy. I have issues with that.
Do all high schools have doors on the stalls? Because mine didn't.
Majority of them, the majority of them. And it's like that in the girls' bathroom. So again, this is.
I don't know what the girls' bathroom had in mine.
Again, this is, well, I took, only reason why I know Mr. Mayor, only reason why I know Mr. Mayor, I went on a tour. Kip principal, Mr. Tracy McDaniel, took me on a tour of that school, so that's the only reason why I know that. But again, then we will look at ADA requirements. If a person has a handicap, they cannot get to the second floor.
Is part of the issue here because they're not a public school?
Well, the building is a public school. Down on the first floor is Oklahoma City Public Schools. It's Moon. Upstairs is Kip.
And I think that is probably at least part of the problem that needs to be addressed, or part of the solution that needs to be addressed. Yeah, I'm with you. I'm all for these capital improvements, and when they make one decision and then change their mind, that's not good, because, you know, our maps for kids' money, you know, can be expended. But it's tough when you have a charter school inside of a public school and then trying to figure out how the funds should be appropriately awarded. So I feel for you.
Councilman, we have had discussion with the school administration, and they are planning on doing some work out there. I'd be glad to get your report and get that back to you as to what they plan on doing.
Okay, that would be great, but I just wanted to send a clear message to the trust as well as the school district. They have to do a better job when it comes to Moon and also Northeast Academy. Northeast Academy, every time it rains, that school floods. Every time it rains, that school floods. Then there are some improvements that need to be made to the science labs. Here it is, possibly a science school, but yet the laboratories don't work. So I do, I just wanted to send a message from the horseshoe to Oklahoma City Public Schools, get your act together.
All right. Anything else, John?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Let's see. Pat, are you through? Okay.
I'm sorry, these are just minor questions. This may be premature, but we had two items on A, pardon me, 6Y.2 and 6Y.3, that are adjacent pieces of property handled on separate applications, same owner and the same engineer representing him. And it seemed like that was being expensive and time-consuming for everybody involved, the applicant, the council, the planning commission. I'm just curious if there's a reason for that.
They're separate operators, separate applications, so that's why they had to come in.
But the same ownership?
Yes, same building, separate ownership, or separate operators.
This is a little curious. It seemed like it was a waste of money, but if they're happy, I'm happy. On S.8 is a resolution authorizing open market purchase of Jet A Aviation Fuel and $100,000 worth of maintenance on our fuel system. What are we doing buying Jet A fuel? We don't have any jets. We may have some jets I don't know about, but we do want to find out.
We have no jets.
We have no jets, okay. So why are we buying $100,000 worth of jet fuel?
This fuel is for the police helicopters. And about three, probably four or five times a year, they have to purchase fuel. So at that time, we get price quotes and make sure that we're getting the best price per gallon.
And this is for Jet A fuel?
Yes.
They use that? Okay, that answered my question. We do have similar jets. Okay, and then on AN, this is a road improvement project, and I was curious if we're going to add additional days to this project and what the completion date might be. This is Council Road from 122nd to Memorial Road.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. The change order that's on the agenda today actually changes a little bit of the signaling over, but right now we have the final inspection scheduled for the middle of July, so in the next couple of weeks, we'll be wrapping that project up.
All right, don't go away. I have a similar question on AB, Alpha Papa. This is MacArthur Boulevard from Memorial Road to 150th Street, and we added 10 additional working days. This project has become a real issue out there because it's taken over a year, and we still haven't finished the project.
It has. One of the issues that we ran into out there was actually some high groundwater issues, and it was apparent in the design that it was going to need some additional underdrain on the east side of the roadway there. We have, with this change order, adding underdrain to the west side of the roadway to help dewater that. They've actually had some significant construction issues trying to build that in the water. But right now, the completion date, right, is at the end of this summer, so we're just a couple of short months away from being able to wrap that project up and have the.
People out there wouldn't agree with the short month calendar, but that's okay. Thank you. Similar question on X1, Alpha Omega, and it's adding 25 days to the time involved, Northwest 192nd Street Portland to May.
Yes, and in this change order, what's being changed is there's actually a significant water line that's being constructed as a part of the project. We were hoping to be able to open trench that, but it's going to be better to bore it, so that's actually drill it underground, and so this cost pays for that. The days is about 25 days, and the completion on this is spring of 2014.
Okay, thank you. And on AS, Alpha Sugar Point 3, this is renewal of a contract on drainage improvements, clearing out storm drains and the like, sewers and the things. And I'm guessing we're doing this for an appearance sake, but primarily to make sure the water goes through there in a flooding condition. And in recent years, we've allowed developers to utilize natural drainage ways in lieu of putting in concrete. It's great, it looks much better, but quite often, there seems to be a miscommunication between the developer and the homeowners association that exists following his leaving the project as to what their responsibilities are. Do we have any program to inspect these kind of drainage facilities, make sure they'll work despite the homeowners misunderstanding what's required of them?
So there's really two answers to the question, and I think what I'll mention, this contract that's on the council today is actually to help supplement some of our field services work when we have work that's over and beyond our capability, so that's what this contract is.
This raised a question in my mind, it really wasn't related to this, it was related to a similar utilization.
So we do. So creeks and channels will fall into two categories, as most of us will know. There's those that have easements that have city access to them, and then those that are private. Now, the ones that are city easements, the ones that are public channels, we inspect those monthly. And so the past couple of council meetings, you've actually renewed some agreements with channel cleaning and inspection services. We'll actually send contractors out as they bid that work. They'll inspect the channel, they'll clear any grass that's over 18 inches tall, they'll remove any limbs or debris that have collected in that channel over that past month, and that's done for each year. I think we have eight contracts now that do that service. But in the private areas where we don't have access, it's a private matter, so the homeowners that are adjacent to that private channel are responsible for the inspection and cleaning.
If we had an easement on those, if we took an easement, and when we, those things were platted, required an easement, we would then have the ability to go in and ensure that they worked, and then go to the homeowners and say they're not meeting their obligation.
I would tell you that, yes, it's possible to do that. Some of the issues that we ran into, one is going to be of cost. There are literally hundreds of miles of creeks and channels that aren't currently in easements, and so the costs would be significant. I haven't calculated that, that's something that we maybe could look at to see what the impact would be on the city budget. The second issue is a lot of the private creeks and channels just don't have access. I mean, the homes literally butt right up to them, and there's not a way to put a piece of equipment in them the way that they were originally platted or constructed. So I would find several very difficult, but we could, yes, if they were an easement, we could access them possibly and do some cleaning.
Well, the consequences of not doing it, although they don't occur often, can be significant. If those drainage facilities don't work, we run the risk of flooding people, and that's my concern. But if, I'm sure you're on top of that kind of. And then my final question is on 6CE, Charlie Easy, and this is just a curiosity question. This has to do with a little free library in Pearl Mesa Park, and how many little free libraries do we have? This the first one or one of them?
I'm not aware of any others.
Okay. I think it's a great idea, but I just thought, I was curious as to how many others we might have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Meg, did you have anything?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention a really fun program. Item CE, 6CE, is in agreement with Mesa Park and our Parks Department to put in some of these little libraries. And this has been done in other places around the country, but they're little, interesting architectural designs on a single pole, basically, that'll be in neighborhood parks, and it's an opportunity for people to borrow and lend books. It's a terrific program, and Wendell, thank you for embracing it. I know that the Neighborhood Association was involved, Neighborhood Alliance was involved, and thank you for kind of shepherding this through the process, and I'm excited that Mesa Park's going to be the first neighborhood.
It is the first, but we do have other neighborhoods speaking with us about future ones.
Thank you very much.
James?
Yeah, I just, the Wilshire widening, I just, this is the question I get asked most about street widening, so I'm just reassuring that the estimated completion date is still May of 2015. Is that correct?
It is.
I'm sorry, I'm probably going to ask this question every time it's on the agenda, so.
I'd be happy to respond each time. So now, the Wilshire project is finishing up the plans as we speak, and it's still anticipated to bid just later this year, so we're working that as quickly as possible. It's a complicated project, so we've budgeted about two years of time that will be required, but once we get a contractor on board, we may be able to find some efficiencies in the schedule as they get ready to face the.
Okay. So still spring of 2015, summer?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Is this to connect County Line with the interstate?
County Line and Council.
It's in between County Line and Council. Anybody else on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Onto the concurrence docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
All right, any individual considerations on the consent docket? All right, ready to vote? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're onto item eight. This begins a series of items that require a separate vote. Item 8A1 is a zoning case in Ward 6, has to do with Aztec School. The address is 2600 General Pershing Boulevard. It's currently I-2, moderate industrial, and R-1, single family, and it would become a new plan unit development. Meg?
This is an incredibly exciting project on General Pershing Boulevard, and just as an aside, I've been speaking with some of the folks over there, and they have an idea to maybe brand the district as we have so many of our other neighborhoods, and there was a little bit of a discussion about all the new generation things that are happening over there, and it suddenly dawned on me that it's on General Pershing Boulevard, so we're thinking about calling it New Gen, kind of a New Gen district or a New Gen corridor or something. We've got Aztec School, we've got North Care with a new campus over there, we've got We've got Aztec School, we've got North Care with a new campus over there, we've got City Care, it's provided such great services, so anyway, that's just an aside. But this is a really exciting project, an opportunity finally for Aztec School to move out of Shepherd Mall, where they've been for a number of years. I think they may be paying the highest rent of any school anywhere in the state, and allowing them to build a new facility. It's been very thoughtfully designed and really exciting. It passed planning commission with no protests, and we do have a technical issue with regard to sign, and I think that's all been approved, and so, Dennis, is there anything you want to add about signage?
No, Dennis Box, and I'm here with Glenn Short, and on the signage, we agree with the planning commission that when we have our final drawings on the sign, we'll go back to the planning commission and get approval for that.
Perfect. So I would move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A1.
Your Honorable's motion, or...
Yeah, Pat.
That's a great street to do this on. I think it really works well, but it's got two of the roughest railroad crossings in town, after 10th Street. I wonder if we could maybe encourage the railroad to do something, or maybe we can do it ourselves to make those railroad crossings not quite as rough, since we're going to get a lot more traffic out there than we've had recently.
I'll make a note to tell the city manager. All right, item 8A2 is also a zoning case in Ward 6. The address is 1300 Northwest 17th Street. We didn't vote. Let's, let's back up and vote then. Item 8A1, you made a motion, and there was a second. All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Now, item 8A2, a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1300 Northwest 17th Street. It's currently R-1, single family, and it would become a new simplified planning development. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I see Ken here. I don't know, Ken, if you want to speak, but this is, you know, in full conformity with our plan. It's an indoor development in an important neighborhood. There was just one comment that the spud should continue to maintain the sidewalks, which is...
And we're happy to do that, and if...
We'll need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ken Fitzsimmons, and speaking on behalf of 133, or 1300 Northwest 17th. And yes, we're happy to do what's been asked as far as the sidewalk maintenance or replacement.
Great. Ken, why don't you just tell us a little bit about the project, because it is so nice to see some inner-city infill.
Well, thank you. Yeah, and that's exactly what this is about. My wife and I have owned the lot for five years, and we had originally had the notion of building a house for ourselves there, but over time, we feel like this would be in a more appropriate use for the area. Northwest, or Classon SAS is across the street, and my kids go there, and so we've been watching how the neighborhood interacts with that area, and this is a pretty busy intersection, and so it seems more appropriate for some multifamily. There's multifamily on all sides, basically, and we feel like being close to the Plaza District, where we would like to develop this to cater to that, to the people that might want to go to the Plaza, live, live close by, and we're trying to make this something that would be affordable, but, you know, still modern, but respectful of the neighborhood.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much. It's a great project. There were no protests at planning, and I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, item 8A2. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 901 North Portland Avenue. It's R-1, single-family residential, and it would become a new simplified planning unit development. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? He was present at the planning commission meeting. There were no protests at the planning commission. They approved it unanimously. Has anybody signed up? I would move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on item 8A3. Passed unanimously. Item 8B is a request to close an alley in Ward 7. John, you okay with this?
Yes, I move. Well, before I say that, do we have any protests? I move for approval.
Second.
All right, cast your votes on item 8B. It passed unanimously. Item 8C is a zoning case in Ward 3. The address is 9200 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently R-1, single-family residential, and it would become a new planned unit development. Planning sent this to us with a recommendation for denial, and Larry, we have one person that has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. What I'd like to do then, if it's okay with everybody, is to start off, I'll let the applicant present his recommendation. Then we'll hear from the protester, and then open it up for questions from council, and I'll make some comments at the end. Let me say that this has gone through a very lengthy process. The land in question is already zoned for R-1, which means that a developer can come in and put the minimum requirements for R-1 residential housing on 6,000 square foot lots, and this is a, an attempt to change that and move it up. We've had a case in the last couple of weeks where we had a PUD that was trying to enhance the area, because that was the purpose of a PUD. This is an attempt, is it not, David, to enhance the development that would possibly go in there?
That's correct.
Okay, and last week, unfortunately, I was on vacation, council. I was in contact with the applicant and also, I think, the protester. I asked the protester to contact the applicant and, and see if some things could be worked out. To my knowledge, that did not occur.
That is correct.
So that's kind of the historical perspective of this, so David, if you would, sir.
Thank you. David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. This is an application to rezone 74 acres from R-1 to PUD. As the council knows, typically, when you see a PUD, it's to vary some sort of requirement. It's to skirt a rule that the code might have, but here, instead of varying any of the requirements, we're actually ratcheting up the requirements on this development. As an R-1 product right now, my client could go develop 6,000 square foot lots. They could all be vinyl. There'd be no requirement to commit to amenities. There'd be no requirement to commit to any sort of screening. You could develop 321 lots once it's fully sewed. What we are asking for is a PUD on the 74 acres that will actually take the number of homes down to 290. So we have a net loss of density by doing this PUD. And in addition, we've committed to all brick homes. We've committed to amenities such as a pool, cabana with showers for the guests. We've committed to a fence along 44th and along county line that would be stockade with brick columns in between. So we have several things that we've committed to that will allow for this development to be better and a nicer development than what the current zoning would allow. I think this, it's certainly a unique situation where you have something that's already zoned R-1, and you're going to a PUD and enhancing what you could do already with your zoning requirements. We have a mix of different uses here, or excuse me, a mix of different products. You have three different tracks. On the west side, you have a track that will be half-acre lots, and what we've committed to on that is a minimum of 1,600 square foot homes. You have Track 2, which will be zoned R-1, and we've committed to the number of lots, which is 152, and we've committed to, like I said, the brick homes, but also a minimum square footage of 1,100 square feet. And then you have Track 3. We've committed to 1,100 square foot minimum, as well as the brick homes. Further, we have committed to, and this was an issue at planning commission, we've committed to a walkway between Track 3 to the C3 on the hard corner. This is the, what you see before you is really the second rendition of this plat. Initially, the plat didn't have connection between Track 2 and 1, and so now, no matter where you live within this development, you could drive to the amenity, you could walk to the amenity via sidewalk, so we think it creates a sense of community, and instead of having three little pocket parks, three little places with a gazebo, my client would rather commit to one very nice amenity that will be more used by the neighborhood and create a better sense of community. As I mentioned, Track 3 is, is a product called R1ZL, and I'm going to turn that over to Hussein Farzana to explain that, and I have some exhibits.
Hussein Farzana with the Riggs Avenue Law Firm at 5801 North Broadway, and I just want to say, I was a little bit disappointed. I thought all the people here were here to see me, so I was, I guess, not. I'm going to explain the Home Creations R1ZL product, and we call it our patio homes. And so there's been a lot of misconceptions and concerns about what these R1ZL products are going to be. Well, they're not going to be zero lot lines. Zero lot line would indicate that you build up to your lot, and the next structure starts up at their lot. We let five foot between each one of our lots, so that'd be 10 feet between each house, and 20 feet for the backyard. Now, these are not huge yards. We're not saying they are. So why are we putting these homes out there? We're putting them out there because our research and development team has figured out that there's a niche for these markets. Who are these for? They're for young professionals, they're for senior adults, empty nesters, people who are looking to downsize, they're for newlyweds and military families. I myself am a young professional. I guess I'm a little bit more nervous than I thought. I used to be a prosecutor, and you guys scare me more than Jerry does. Anyways, I don't want to work six, seven, eight days, six, seven days a week and then have to mess with a big yard, and this is what these are for. Also, just because you don't want to work and maintain a big yard doesn't mean you don't want a quality home, okay? So what we put in these homes are a lot of amenities. You have your tornado, tornado features, including tornado straps, hurricane anchor bolts, and OSB sheeting. We've got at least 70% brick in all houses, councillor Box evaded to, two-car garage, and the homeowners can upgrade to granite tops, they can have lots of other things. Also, Home Creations is the only home builder in the state of Oklahoma who's won the Partner of the Year award with the Department of Energy, so we have all those in our R1ZL homes as well. Similar neighborhoods have sold for about $115 a square foot for these types of homes. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
It's a comment. I've worked with this development group before. They have some projects in Ward 8, and they have reputation for doing good work and doing what they say they're going to do, so I, I'm, I think it's a good project from that standpoint. We've got good developers in it, and they're solid. They've been here a long time, doing a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, we have one person that's signed up to speak.
David, does that conclude your, y'all's presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and let's hear from the...
Okay. Jerry Teddy? Good morning, Jerry, and we'll need your name and address for the record.
Jerry Teddy, 5101 South County Line Road. I don't know whether any of you guys on the councilman has gotten a copy of our protest. Do y'all have a copy of it?
I don't.
I turned it in last Friday.
Okay, staff has it then, okay.
This similar project was brought up before the planning commission about nine, six years ago, and it was overwhelmingly voted down for the reason being, all the homes around the, around that whole complete project range in value from 200-plus to half a million dollars to even over a million dollars. Some of those properties around there are going to be affected, real adversity with this type of construction. Values are going to go down. I was told by two different developers that my property, which I own the 80 acres just south of this addition, that I would probably lose $5,000 to $7,000 an acre in value by having this addition built in our neighborhood. You know, the city of Oklahoma City deserves a better neighborhood than this. They can plan it all, paint a real pretty picture for you folks, but I've got some pictures and I'll show you their current, their current project they're working on right now. And what I'm, what I'm trying to do is to protect all of our neighbors to the east, to the north, west, and ourselves. I've got my life invested in this 80-acre tract of ground, and I've built three nice homes back there. They're well over a million dollars' worth of, of property, let alone what the rest of the properties were. We have a bunch of major issues with this addition because of the density of the homes that they're going to build in there, the conflagration hazards we're going to have from a fire standpoint, from water runoff. County line floods every time we get an inch and three-quarter or inch and a half rain, it floods. You can't go through there. Now, I've got some slides. Here's one on the board right now. This is with an inch and three-quarter, and that's a, that's a road, believe it or not. That's a road that you cannot go down. And there's another, there's another picture of it. And there's the condition of our roads right now. All of these additions on our, our county line road use this county line road, and that's the, the road that they're going to be going in and out of on the eastern part of this addition, plus all the other additions down through, through the addition between 59th and 44th. I went to the planning commission 10 years ago and tried to get them to put in a road that would accommodate this, this type of constructions in there. They told me they didn't have the money at the time, and we didn't want to build the new roads until all of this construction was taken care of. Well, folks, I think they got the cart in front of the horses. We've got a problem because this road, like I said, is going to be the main traveled road of all these additions that's being built. We've got 75 homes right across the street from this addition here, being built as we, as I speak. South of it, there's 31 more homes the Habitat for Humanity is using. South of that, there's a retirement center going in, and a school going in. Some of these pictures she's showing you, she, she's getting my head out of me, I think. I'm sorry. We've got major issues with this, just the, the traffic and the street control, you know, just the traffic in and out of there. And if they don't want to fix our roads before they put all these additions in there, what are they going to do once they get them filled up and then they start to fix the road? It's going to be a nightmare. It's going to be almost impossible to get in and out of the place, and because we only have one way in and one way out. This is an entrance to the addition right in front of our property. It's Phil Stone, and they, they've got real nice brick walls and nice homes. We, I think, Mr. McArdy asked me to get with these folks and talk to them about seeing if we could work out a solution to our problem. I did that on two occasions. They said we didn't. We met with the, the man that was up here talking just a while ago, the developer and his lawyer and his engineers, and they, we told them our concerns with the property and kind of fell on deaf ears. We got back with them about a week later in his office, talked to him about it, and our, our desires or wants for the, the better development over there fell on deaf ears. We're going to do this whether you like it or not. That's our feelings. The city of Oklahoma City deserves a better community than this, and all of us that has our life invested in there, we definitely need a better community than this. There's a lot of developments out there that hands-down would 100 times better than this. This is going to do nothing but cause an eyesore for the Oklahoma City area and all these vacant and abandoned properties you've heard this morning talk about. We're going to have a bunch more of them right here in this particular area, because the small homes are going to be, become rental properties, are going to be out of state on. It's going to be a major, major problem. And I, I own, like I said, we own 80 acres south of it, and I'm going to have to look at 30-some-odd houses going down our road every day, in and out. Anytime I leave, there's going to be 30-some-odd houses of these little bitty houses along our road. And if the young lady would want to... This is an entrance to the area right across the street from us. The homes over there range in, the $250,000 ranging up, and then if you go to the next one, that's some of the houses in, in that area. It's got a divided entrance. This is another area over on Morgan Road, which is right next door to some of the properties that these guys is, is developing yet. These are some of the homes in there. These homes go up to half a million dollars, and they're really nice landscape there. This is the area that's coming down from the north side of 44th Street, and they're going to be built down to the north side of this property that we're talking about this morning. I don't believe these folks would want these little 1,100, 1,200 square foot homes right across the street from there. The engineers, we talked to the engineers about what they could do about putting a fence up, just putting a fence up. I noticed he said a while ago they're going to put a pillar and stockade fence along the county line road and then along 44th Street. Never said anything about going down the backside of the property, so I guess I'm assuming that I'm going to be looking at all these little houses with all their different facades or whatever every stinking time I go in and out of my property. Go ahead, honey, and I'll show you some, some more of the fence. This is the engineers fencing that they're going to be putting up. You keep going, that's the more... than one house. Okay, right here. Now, this, this particular picture right here is a picture of their entrance to their latest development. Does that look real good to you? Can't even see the sidewalks, the grass, any mowed. The little bitty clear water, it's, it's just real small. It's a junky-looking neighborhood. And it's brand-new. They're starting it right, they've probably got a, I don't know, 20 homes in there already. This is what I've got to look forward to in our neighborhood, not only me, but all my neighbors, both east, west, north, and south. This is what we got to look forward to being built over there. And it's not right. It's not right for the city of Oklahoma City to have this type of construction put out there when we've got a lot, lot better plans out here that...
I, I think you've made your point. Anything else you want to close with?
I just want to, want to show you some of the fencing that they were going to put up.
Okay.
There's, there's some of it right there that's already on the ground. Only, that's only three years old. This is some more of it. There's some more of it. This is their addition over on Morgan Road. This is some more of it. Look at the pillars, how the pillars go in and out. They're falling down. Who's, who's going to take care of that? I believe the homeowners are going to be stuck with that problem. There's some more of it. And I appreciate your free time and, and the Planning Commission voted it down twice. And I would appreciate it if you folks would do the same.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Before we hear from David, let me just clarify one thing. The, the protesters did meet with the developer before the Planning Commission. So that was not what I was referring to when I said, last week before this meeting, I asked them to meet and they did not meet. But they did meet prior to the Planning Commission. So just to clarify that.
One of the things that we heard through all of the meetings that we had was that the city deserves better and, and they deserve better. And I think what we have with this PUD is better. The gentleman talked about driving down his road and seeing all the houses. It's already zoned R1. He could drive down that road and see all those houses right now, except those houses could be vinyl. But now what he's going to get because of this PUD and the requirements that we're putting is all brick homes. So in our opinion, this certainly is better. We have enhanced what the city's regulations would be for R1. Now, to the water runoff, we're going to have to meet all the city regulations when it comes to drainage and things of that nature. When you look at what this development is going to be, it's going to be a different product than some of the, the images that he showed. And the phrase "get bettered," this is better. Instead of 6,000 square-foot lots, we're actually reducing our density and requiring brick homes with a pool with a sense of community. So we think that this certainly is better and we would ask for the council's approval. Thank you.
Is this Western Heights or Yukon schools?
Mustang.
Mustang, okay.
David, Mr. Teddy articulated a concern about traffic. How do you propose to address traffic? It was addressed in the, in the PUD.
Sure. What my client would like to do is, there was a traffic study done with this development. And what it said is, at some point in the future, there will be a need for a signalization at that intersection. Now, recognizing that my client's development will be a portion of what commits to that or gets to that, but it's not all of it, what he wants to do is pay the cost of a fourth into a general fund of $25,000 to be held for when, at the time, signalization is needed, it's there to be used. I spoke to Mr. Brummett in the city attorney's office and he says that there is a mechanism for it, similar to a fee in Lewis Sidewalk, that my client could put that in. And at the time the signalization is needed, there would be at least a quarter of the cost ready to go. We think that's certainly an equitable way to do it. It's a, it's a strange situation right now with the way that the, the money is required because he was the last guy on the block. If he was the last guy to trip that count, he'd have to pay for all of it. So what we think is a more equitable way to do it is to pay a quarter of the cost, have it in there ready to go when it's needed.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Does this development meet the minimum requirements in our ordinances for residential development?
It actually exceeds it.
It meets or exceeds it?
Correct. We, we don't ask for a single variance. We exceed every, everything within the PUD.
Larry, we have someone else. I've just been handed to someone else that's signed up to speak. That's all right.
Sorry to jump in here.
We will need your name and address for the record.
Heather Fitzgerald, 9500 Southwest 44th Street. So we own basically all of the northwest quarter of Section 24, which is, you know, just next to it. And there's one home that sits on all of that land. And I just wanted to go on record, basically against the development plan. And the reason for it is that the homes are not similar in value or nature to the surrounding area. And that's basically it.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
Can I ask you a question? Where, where do you, the people that live in this area, where do you shop generally? Where do you get your groceries and...
In Mustang.
In Mustang?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
David, can you come forward? How many houses are in this development?
Our proposal has 290. And I asked the engineer to, to run the numbers if we just developed it and didn't come before and asked for zoning, and that number is 321. So we've reduced the number of homes that we could do right now by our zoning by 31.
How big are those, the smallest lots there? How big are those?
The smallest lots, which would be the R1ZL product, are 4,000 square feet. But what we've done is, we've made a minimum requirement for our square footage in those homes to be 1,100 square feet.
And what sort of site-proof fencing is, is available? Is it, is a long 44th or what about the back of it?
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. We would be happy to go ahead and just put a stockade fence with brick column at the corner of every lot to address the concern of the neighbor to the south. And also, the pictures that you saw was taken immediately after the tornado of May 20th and the fence and the brick columns that you saw fell down. Was in one of our communities called Bimberly Estate and had no representation of the ongoing communities. And as, as a matter of fact, it is owned by the HOA and we are paying for that to be repaired. Thank you.
Okay. And is there just one outlet on the county line?
On county line, there is just one and it matches up. And then there are two on to Southwest 44th.
Okay. The, the street conditions that we saw in those pictures on county line, are those expected to be improved? Do we have any, are they in a bond issue or...
That I'm not sure. On the flooding issue, I would like to note that that picture was taken actually the day of the Planning Commission when there was a significant rain event. I believe the council will remember, I actually had a meeting with Ms. Allier. So it was a very significant rain event that led to those pictures. So, but as far as bond issues on, on widening or improving the streets, I'm not sure.
There is no current plan to resurface those streets under the 2007 bond program. At the time, of course, as everybody knows, that we came up with a list of registered products. Correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, on that. But they did not match the requirements for a resurfacing at that time. So they will be candidates for the next bond program, which will come out in 2016, 17, or 18.
Most likely 2017. But yes, so they're not currently on the schedule for any immediate improvements, but they are on an unfunded list that we're monitoring and will consider in the future bond issue.
So that's, that's where those streets stand right now. So there's no question that County Line Road is not in the kind of condition that everybody would like it to be in. But it will be fixed, as Eric said, in the next bond issue. It's a candidate for that, and that's several years away. Any other questions from council? Let me just see if I understood what, what was just said. The applicant is willing to put that same fencing on the, would be on the, on the south portion of the, of the property?
Yes, sir. He's willing to do the, the brick columns with stockade in between.
And on, on the west portion also? Or just the south?
Just the south. That's where there's affected...
Just the south, because there's nothing to the west at this point?
Correct.
Okay, so there's an, there's an enhancement right there.
That would not be required under...
Would not be required. Let me make a few comments and then I'm, I'm torn, but I'm going to ask for approval on this, and I'll tell you why. This particular plot of land was zoned for R1 housing. And so any person who takes over this plot of land can build standard R1 housing with the specifications that the applicant has talked about. In my opinion, this is a significant improvement. Is it the ultimate in, in a community? No. But is it an enhancement over what is currently our R1 zoning requirements? Yes. I'm reminded, one of the pictures that was shown up here was very interesting, was from Morgan Road. And I'm very familiar with a similar situation that occurred at the intersection of Southwest 29th and Morgan Road when I first became a councilman about 12 years ago. There was a developer who wanted to come in on the northeast portion of that intersection and put in vinyl housing of minimum R1 standard. And the people who lived right across the street, and you saw a picture of their neighborhood called Walden Creek, WC, violently objected. One of their key objections was it was going to tear down the real estate value of their neighborhood. Well, let me tell you, in the, in the 10 years that that neighborhood has been in across the street that they were so violently approved to, opposed to, and the developer did come in and put in brick homes instead of his plan to put in vinyl homes, there was absolutely no deterioration in the land value or the quality of life coming from Walden Creek right across Southwest 29th, as was projected. I don't believe that this neighborhood will adversely impact the development that will be put in exactly to the north of this across Southwest 44th Street. We talk a lot about diversity in this city. One of the elements of diversity, I think, is sometimes we need to realize that the diversity means people have different needs. And the market research that's been done, the developer is betting that he is going to be able to sell those houses, those zero-lot-line houses, to quality people of good character who will maintain the whole honesty and integrity of this particular neighborhood. And he's requiring that there be a mandatory homeowners association with covenants, with restrictions that they'll have to, they'll have to abide by. Can we enforce those? We don't enforce those. But if we have good-character people living out there, whether they shop in Oklahoma City or Mustang or Yukon, that's a whole nother issue. I think this is a, a quality development improvement over what is currently available there, and so I move for approval.
All right, Ed?
I, I think those are convincing arguments and I'm, I'm going to vote with Larry. I, I do think that, that where people shop is an issue. And, and this is tangential and, and doesn't go to the actual vote. But in terms of a comprehensive plan, we've got to get our arms around a plan. Because to continue to build higher density right next to, I mean, and it's, it's somewhat, it's very curious, and I know that we have these entities like Mustang and The Village and Nichols Hills and all these things within our confines. But to build all this, all this development and then have everyone shop in Mustang means that, that all the property tax, again, only state in America where the property tax is not going to the city to pay for services, all goes somewhere else. So it's only sales tax. And if you look at, at the sales tax here, this is taxpayer subsidized. The people that live within Oklahoma City are subsidizing services, police and fire and, and emergency transport, all of it, for this kind of development. If you build development right next to another municipality and then everyone in, in the confines of Oklahoma City is shopping within Mustang, all the sales tax is going to Mustang. And the sales tax to pay for services for this area is coming from taxpayers elsewhere. And I just, it's, it's for down the road. I just, I just need to opine that we've got to get our arms around this when we develop our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Mr. Shid, Dr. Shidde's pointed out an interesting problem, but he's failed to point out a solution. Do we build a wall between? Do we collect their money from payroll tax? You get paid for this thing? As you pointed out, a real serious problem, but you, you failed to come up with any kind of recommendation for a solution.
One, one solution that we talked about two weeks ago was if you're going to, if you're going to, this is already zoned R1. If you're going to do PUDs, if you, how about some mixed-use development? How about, how about having, how about having, Larry talked about diversity. How about having some commercial activity with these developments?
Well, the, the thing our housing market ought to do is present options for homeowners. They want to live in a small house with low maintenance, that ought to be an option available to them. They want to live in a bigger house across the street with a, a bigger yard, that ought to be an option for them. And so I think when we talk about, you know, requiring this to be a certain size home or not wanting to build it because, I think we need to keep in mind that success of Oklahoma City is because we offer a variety of choices in housing. You can live downtown if you want to, or you can live out near Mustang. It's up to the individual making that decision. And our development community's been responsive to that, to the extent that they can be responsive to that. And I don't think the city has a, a, a opportunity to go in there and tell people they can't develop their land as long as it, it, it conforms with the ordinances we have. Now, we want to change our ordinances, that's a different issue.
But Pat, we're going to chase after them with infrastructure investments. The next bond...
Because we, we are shortsighted. We allow development to lead improvements in the infrastructure.
Exactly. So you're asking me for a solution. Part of the solution is when you develop the comprehensive plan, you, you decide this is where the city's infrastructure is going to go, and then the development follows that instead of us chasing development.
You, you bring up a point that you've argued against before, and that is, we go in too early on these projects. We need to go in before the development occurs. We're trying to do that as best we can. Some areas are developing right now without that benefit. And that's unfortunate for everybody. Unfortunate for the city, unfortunate for the homeowners out there.
Larry?
Unfortunately, I, I made a clerical mistake when I was giving my motion to approve. I need to add in there that the technical evaluations that are included in the PUD are part of that. And the amendment, the additional commitment, we may have to vote separate on that, the, to build the fence line along the, okay? So we need, we need to take that in, in two motions for the fencing, the additional fencing that's not in the PUD, and then the technical evaluations are included. And I would make one other, that I, nobody has talked about this all the, Bob, put you on the spot. I know the answer to this, but I'd just like to hear it from you. This particular plot of land is in our, our city master plan, the Southwest Sector Plan for urban development.
That's correct.
And this conforms with that Southwest Sector Plan that was, was worked out. So I'd like to first make a motion that we approve this with the addition of the fencing along the, what is it, the south line?
The south line.
The south line.
And, councilman, if I may, the Planning Commission recommended denial, so the, the technical evaluations are not a part of this. One of the technical evaluations that they asked for is Track 1 be eliminated. A Track 1 will have half-acre lots with private sewer solutions. Sewer's not available for that portion. So the only way my client can make use of that is through private, and there's nothing within the code to, to not allow that. So from our perspective, the, the TEs aren't a part of it.
How do we handle this, Francis? What, what motion do I need to make?
I think your motion would be to amend, we need the amendment for the fence, but to delete or to not require the three technical evaluations that were listed in the council memo.
Okay. My first motion would be to amend the PUD for the fence.
Cast your votes.
Can I ask one question?
Well, we just added the fence.
Okay. One of the unfavorable considerations from staff is that it can't be served by the public sanitary sewer system.
That you can't what?
It can't be served by the public sanitary sewer system.
That is correct. Only Track 1. Track 2 and 3 can't. There's a ridge that falls essentially right between Track 2 and 1. And so the west of the ridge, sewer's not available. We have creative engineers and they tried to find a way and they couldn't. But 2 and 3 are served by a public sanitary sewer.
All right? So we have the amendment. You need to make another motion?
I move, I move for approval, Francis.
Without the TEs.
Move for approval without the TEs.
All right. Voting on item 8C. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8D is a zoning case in Ward 5. The address is 13615 Southwest 44th Street. The address is 13615 Southwestern. It's currently double-A agriculture. It would become a new planned unit of development. It's in Ward 5. It was also recommended for denial at the planning commission. And David, we have, it looks like four people that have signed up to speak so far.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. What I'd like to propose is that this is a continuation from our previous council meeting, and I don't think it's necessary for the sides to go through the same amount of detail that we did two weeks ago. With that being said, if there's any new information, I'll first ask Mr. Box to present his position, and then the individuals representing the protesters will speak.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. We are certainly agreeable to only visit issues that are a change from the previous hearing, and we would just ask that the opposing council adhere to that as well. By way of starting, I'd like to present a video that my client prepared discussing some of the development.
Before we get started with the video, may I ask a question, as a repeat of a question I asked on the previous case? Does this particular project as proposed meet all the subdivision regulations?
Same answer, it exceeds.
Or exceeds?
Yes.
Thank you.
David Box, 522. Also with me are my clients, Jalal, Mohammed, and Hussein Farzana. We also have Bob Gumm, who's an oil and gas attorney. We also have Chris Anderson with SMC. So the threshold question in this case is whether or not single-family residential is appropriate in an area dominated by single-family residential. And as the councilman said, we're going to keep it to things that have changed. And one of the things that have changed is, after the meeting two weeks ago, we went and met with the council. He came up with some things that he wanted to see in this development. That was an average lot size of 7,500 square feet, a minimum of 15,000 square feet on the southern boundary, storm shelters in everything, in every house, two trees in every backyard, amenities in the PUD such as the pool, the clubhouse, things of that nature that we discussed, and then brick columns along the south with eight-foot stockade between. So we went and revised our PUD, submitted that. We then approached this hearing, and as of late yesterday, the councilman had some additional items that he wanted us to agree to. A minimum square footage of 7,000 square feet exceeding the R1 requirements, 11,000 square-foot lots on the southern line, but in regards to the fence, he wants brick columns with stockade between, but instead of the stockade going to the ground, he wants two feet of brick along that. And after a lot of thought, my client this morning has agreed to that. So we have agreed to every single request that's been made of us. We have been giving for about a year now. So we certainly think that this is an appropriate development. When you look at the comp plan, it calls for this. And I think it's important when the council decides this case to think about what this question really is, and that is use. We're just talking about use. And is single-family appropriate when it's surrounded by single-family? One of the other issues that we faced last time was protests from some attorneys representing the oil and gas interests. We've revised our Exhibit B to the PUD to take out the lines within the boundary of this property, and Mr. Tag is here, or he was here, and he has advised me that we've satisfied his concern, and they are no longer protesting the zoning piece of this. So at least the oil and gas attorneys have withdrawn their protest. So when we look at whether or not this is appropriate, if we look at the comp plan, the comp plan would certainly say, yes, it is appropriate. When we look to the staff, the staff would say, yes, it's appropriate. They recommended approval. When we look at the planning commissioner from this ward, he said yes, he thought it was appropriate. Those of you who were here last time, you heard Mr. Brummett, you heard his advice on his legal analysis on what this case meant if it were appealed, and he's here to address that as well. But when you look at all the issues out there, I think it is difficult to find a scenario where single-family residential is not appropriate in this location. Like I said, we've agreed to all the additional things that the councilman has asked us as of this morning. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions. We would ask for your approval, and I believe they have the video ready, so I'll let them play the video.
Home Creations is a family-owned company whose owners have been building homes in Oklahoma for over 32 years. We've built more than 7,000 homes for Oklahoma families and are currently building in more than 25 communities in Oklahoma City and Tulsa. We pride ourselves on our quality construction, customer service, and being a good neighbor. Very excited about the proposed plans for our new neighborhood community, Palermo Place. Palermo Place will be located in South Oklahoma City, near the corner of Southwest 134th and Western, with access off of Western. There will be no access off of Blackwelder. This site is currently undeveloped. And building single-family homes there will limit the proposed 15 oil wells that are currently planned. Palermo Place will include 250 of Home Creations' high-quality, energy-efficient, unique homes available for purchase by Oklahoma families. With over 100-floor plans and a variety of elevation options, these homes will be single-family units ranging in size from 15 to 2,500 square feet. Some of the lots will be as large as 15,500 square feet, which is two and a half times the current requirement for R1 zoning. Every home in Palermo Place will also include a storm shelter for safety, as well as the wind-resistant tornado safety features installed in all of Home Creations' homes. The neighborhood will feature amenities, including a clubhouse, swimming pool, exercise room, and playground. Palermo Place will provide much-needed housing in South Oklahoma City and will increase property values as new construction prices are continually rising. Families who live in Palermo Place will also visit restaurants and businesses in the surrounding area, providing additional tax revenue for South Oklahoma City. We welcome the opportunity to build a quality community and to be a good neighbor in South Oklahoma City. We hope you will welcome us. To learn more about Home Creations and Palermo Place, or if you have any questions, please visit our website at homecreations.com/palermoplace, or call us at 364-9999 and ask for Anita.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And David, we have some people that have signed up to speak.
Yes, uh-huh. If we can hear from those individual, now, excuse me, Your Honor, I'm sorry. Eric, did you, representing some of the protesters, should we let, I think we should let any attorney speak, and then we'll ask for the individual protester.
Yes, Councilman, I do represent a protester. We have a little different lineup today. Mr. Parrick will go first, and then Mr. Kennedy, and then me.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Parrick, 13729 Hillahay Drive. Appreciate your time, and I'd particularly like to thank Councilman Greenwell for the time that you've been in on this. I know that you've worked hard to get the parties together, and I would like to just point out a couple of quick things. I have met with the applicant a number of times on this, and I am appreciative of all of the time that you've spent, and I will, there have been improvements to this project from when it was originally proposed, but at the end of the day, it really is a project whose density doesn't fit where it's planned. If you look from when we started this process almost a year ago, the bulk of the lot sizes haven't changed hardly at all. And if you look at the densities, which you'll hear a lot more about probably in a minute, it is two to 20 times more dense than the surrounding neighborhoods. If, in fact, if you look at the aerial as it was shown, one thing that I think is worth pointing out is, this is a fully-developed neighborhood. If you look south of 134th Street, this is not, this is the only piece of vacant, raw land. The aerial makes it look like there's more, but those are really acreages, horse farms, large lots. And to me, this really gets at what the intent of the PUD ordinance is, and that is, does it make neighborhoods better or worse? And I think this one makes it worse, because it sets the neighborhood on a course that's really irreversible. You, as a group and individually, have talked a lot about how important neighborhoods are, how important the strength, the preservation of neighborhoods are, and I think this is an opportunity for you to say, less strengthen this neighborhood and reject this application.
David Kennedy, 1601 Northwest Expressway, and I'm here on behalf of both the Calistoga neighborhood, as well as various owners on the east side of Western Avenue. And I'll be pretty brief and let somebody that's actually eloquent get up here and talk. I handed out both an aerial photo and a map from the Cleveland County Assessor's Office showing the quarter section in which this property is located, and the five quarter sections that abut it, which are south of 134th Street. Now, there's actually only two platted subdivisions out of those six-quarter sections. Calistoga, which basically has a minimum lot size of 10,400 square feet. And then the Tuscany subdivision, which has maybe acre and a half lots. I'm not going to say that there haven't been some concessions and modifications by the applicant. But what they've been pushing for, for a long time, was 6,000-square-foot lots en masse. And now, they've been backed off, at least in some respects, to 7,000-square-foot lots. That's really not consistent with the character of those six-quarter sections or five-quarter sections that surround this property. And while nobody's going to get up here and tell you that this shouldn't be developed for single-family housing, even a minimum of 7,000 is really too small to fit in with what the other quarter sections have. So in closing, my request would be that the minimum be 9,000, which would at least approximate, you know, where Calistoga is, and, you know, have some effect that it doesn't completely change the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Can I clarify, can I ask you a question? So you're saying that no one has an objection to single-family housing as a land use?
I, well, I mean, I can't speak as to everybody, you know, that might have protested this, but I can speak for this neighborhood and the people on the east side. I think they recognize that this is going to end up being single-family housing. They would prefer that it not be 6,000 or 7,000-square-foot lots.
So that's, the objection is the size. Let me ask you another question. Are you aware, are any of the protesters interested in buying the land from the developers? And are any of the protesters have home-building interests, either related to, or they have it themselves?
Well, Eric represents Alan Gann, who owns neighboring property kind of to the west here. And I think that he has offered to purchase that property. And I wouldn't speak for him in terms of what his long-term plan would be with it, but yeah, I think he has offered to purchase the property from the applicant.
So one of the protesters, one of the principal protesters is, wants to buy the property, is that a fair?
That is my understanding, yes.
And what, do you know what they want to do with it, or do they want to build?
Well, I'd really rather let Eric speak on behalf of his client.
All right.
Thanks for coming down. Pat Brunet?
I'm a lawyer, if you could put your lawyer's name first.
Eric, you want to wrap up your two guys first?
Yes.
Okay. You're right, Pat.
My name is Eric Rose, for the record. I represent a protestant, Alan Gann. I want to begin by responding to Councilman Shiddey's question. My client had an interest in purchasing this land, because he owns, if you look at that blank spot to the left there, 15 acres, right under where the letters PUD 867 are, there's a tract. My client owns that tract. He bought it to build a home. Someone has spread a rumor that he really didn't intend to build a home, but he does, and here are the plans. They're done by Jimmy Bowers, whom you're all probably acquainted. I think if my client had the opportunity, he would buy the land, but he would do something different than this that would be compatible with surrounding uses.
But he, but can I clarify?
Yes, sir.
He would do something compatible with the surrounding uses, so he would build homes that are compatible with it?
Well, he's not a builder, you know, but I think if he had his way, if I had my way as his counsel, we would develop this in, as a PUD, with much larger lots and a different design. But I don't think it's out of the question to say that single-family detached dwellings are appropriate for this land, but it's all about design. You know, a little earlier, when you and Councilman Ryan were talking back and forth, Councilman Ryan said, maybe this is a question about law, what our law presently requires. Our law presently requires 6,000-square-foot lot minimum in R1. Maybe that's not the best public policy, but what I think Councilman Ryan was saying was, as long as that's it, then we should abide by it. But for areas like this, which are surrounded by larger lots, 6,000-square-foot lots are not appropriate, in my opinion, and we wouldn't develop it that way if we had the choice.
I guess what, and I'll just ask you frankly, I mean, this feels a little bit Linus with the football, with Charlie Brown. I mean, that they keep, I mean, for a year, things have been asked, and then they say yes, and they say, well, okay, well, we need this, we need something else, and then they say yes, and then they ask for something else, and they say yes. I mean, just even in the last month, there's been, they'll agree to this amount, and then we want, it just, so I just want to make sure that nobody's trying to make this so expensive and cumbersome that then they're able to acquire the land and do the development themselves.
No, that's not my intention. It's not the intention of my client. I don't believe we've been moving the football or the goalposts. Our suggestions for this development have been consistent all the way along. Now, while we're on that subject, Councilman Greenwell, who has worked arduously to help resolve this, is my understanding, and he suggested to the applicant that they have a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet, and if I understood, Mr. Box, they've accepted that. Is that correct? Is that right? They've also agreed that lots on the south should be 11,000-square-foot minimum. Is that right? But I also understood that Councilman Greenwell suggested an average lot size overall of 8,000 square foot, but I didn't hear you accept that. Does not accept it, or accept?
I have not been presented that, Mr. Rose.
Oh, I'm sorry. My misunderstanding. I thought that you had asked them for that. Mr. Brummett spoke the last time we were here about what would happen if you denied this, and it went to the Oklahoma County District Court. There are some fine distinctions here. If this was just an R1 application, and you denied it, and it went to district court, chances are you'd lose. I think Mr. Brummett would concur with that. Why is that? Because there is a tradition and a history of approving R1 zoning from AA land. We've done it for years on the fringes of this city. And a court might say, well, what's so special about this one? Why would you not grant R1? And chances are, you wouldn't come out too well. But this is not an application for R1 zoning. This is for a PUD. The PUD is a negotiated zoning district. No two are the same. If you deny this and it goes to district court, it's going to be judged by a different standard. I think Mr. Brummett will concur with that. This is not an R1 app. It's an application for a PUD. The court will look at it differently, or it should, at least. So I wanted to get that out of the way. One other thing. Mr. Box said the comprehensive plan sort of favors this, the staff favors this. The planning commission turned it down, however. But Commissioner Powers, Janice Powers, at the planning commission hearing, made a very important point. She said, we've got certain guidelines in the comprehensive plan on the one hand, and we've got an ordinance on the other hand. The ordinance calls for compatibility- The ordinance calls for compatibility with these PUDs, yet the comprehensive plan encourages high density in certain places. Well, there's, she said, a tension between these two things, and indeed, there is. And at some point, the council has to resolve it. I've talked to Councilman Greenwell about the idea of the council addressing this transition issue from AA to R1. When is it appropriate and when is it not? And one cannot avoid the irony of the presentation by Mr. Klaus today, one of the most important presentations I've ever heard before this city council. The core of the city has been rotting for years, and I fought this battle back in the 1970s, when I was on this body. We incentivize development on the fringes of the city and disincentivize development for bypass parcels in the city. And we wonder why we have vacant and abandoned properties. I don't think you can have it both ways. We need a little better public policy, I think, than what we have, and I ask you to consider it. One good thing that's come out of this with this developer is storm shelters. I think that was Councilman Greenwell's idea, and I congratulate him on that. But as my colleagues have said, at the end of the day, this just doesn't fit. If three of you vote against it, you send a message to developers that they have to do something better than this if they come in with a PUD. And I hope that that's what you'll do. Once again, thanks very much to Councilman Greenwell for his hard work, and it's a case that has a lot of lessons to be learned and messages to be sent. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Pat Brunett?
My name is Pat Brunett. I live at 13720 Calistoga Drive. I would probably be the closest homeowner from Calistoga.
Where is that on the map?
That would be in the corner, right there, right about where yours is, if you went the lot actually diagonals down.
Okay.
And I'm actually at that right.
At the upper-left part of that map.
In the back of my lot is a wooded area that the creek runs through it.
Okay.
That floods over Blackwelder on any rain event. And what I don't see at all in their plat is the address of stormwater detention. They have conveniently not shown it, so I have some concerns of the flooding, especially when the recent, I don't know if it comes from the council, but I listened to the news, and there are homeowners downstream of us that you are not allowing permitting because it's in a floodway. What I do know is that where they show the upper, close to Tuscany, they showed an open area, that is a floodway. FEMA has done a map, and it is a floodway. The large area, I wish they had the other drawing or the other picture of the aerial, if you have that, I wish you would put that up. There's a large amount of trees there. I do know that in the planning, they're going to have to do a 404 permit. It is likely to find in that area that that is a wetlands, and that the Corps of Engineers is going to have something to say about that. I wish that would have been addressed prior to this so that we could actually see what homes can be built there. But the way the process works, I guess that doesn't work. I also would, it appears to me, when they first came up and presented this, they showed the multi, the apartments. I think this is a clever scheme to show R1, to change zoning to R1, to put in those homes, and then they're going to come in, and where our biggest protest was the apartments and the multi-dwellings that are going to go in there. I think this is just a scheme to get this approved so that they will then come in and put in all the apartments and multi-dwellings. If that area that is not, where they say area proposed to be rezoned was going to be commercial, I think you'd have, and the home lots were of a little larger size, you'd have a lot of agreement from the local area. We didn't protest Tuscany. They were large homes, large lots. There wasn't any protest. What you're finding is an area of the city here that is 5, 10 acres, and larger areas for, that there's reason we bought it. I bought the home. I'm a born and raised here, moved away, chose to come back, and chosen area of South Oklahoma City, of which I was raised, that had trees and creeks in large areas. And now, you're going to make it into an inner-city tract homes. And it, it just amazes me. I would like to point out, when I read through, and I just was provided this, but the PUD 1480, as provided by the applicant, on Section 8, the second sentence, and I read from it, clearly states that the density or intensity of the planned unit development shall not be increased. How is not being increased happening here compared to what's around in the area? It is. So, by their own statement right here, it is being increased.
Maybe we can have them address it. Anything else, Pat?
Oh, yeah. Ask that question again, please.
Is there anything else, Pat?
Yes. The other thing I'd like to ask about is the fencing. I understand they have agreed to fencing along the south side. Why not along Blackwelder and Western at the same time? I know that was asked of them, so they have not necessarily agreed to every, everything that was been asked. I understand also, in this, this one, the brick homes are now becoming veneer homes. That's what's proposed. So, they changed it from all brick to that in this last. So, there is a pattern here, I'm seeing, of the applicant changing it and removing some things also.
Okay.
That's the things I'd like to bring up. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Robert Allenes?
My name is Robert Allenes. I live at 1416 Southwest 136th in Calistoga Crossing. I serve on the homeowners association board there and been involved in this opposition from the beginning. A lot of my concerns, Mr. Brunett just addressed, so I'll keep it brief. The bottom line here is that we're not opposed to this area being developed as a single-family. We would, however, like it done responsibly. We like it done in a way that reflects the character around the community or of the community around it. And so, we're not trying to be unreasonable. We are, however, very much against a developer coming into this community and throwing up poorly planned development that only serves their interests and not the people that are living around it or the people that are going to be buying these homes. So, I would caution you, if your only consideration in approving this neighborhood is, does it meet the minimum requirements for R1, then you're going to be sorely disappointed with the community that you're building.
Thanks, Robert. Janet Muse?
My name is Janet Muse, and I live at 14405 Southwestern. I live on one of the 10 acres that are south of this proposed development. I want to thank you all for hearing us today. Please don't take the small number of protestors here today as a sign of our lack of interest in defeating this requested PUD 1480. We're all involved in getting our lives back together on Southwestern after the tornado of May 20th. I want to address some of the items that I heard on the June 18th meeting about this PUD. Several months ago, our neighborhood held a large public meeting, at which time, the original plan was presented to us. It included 266 single-family homes, 990 multifamily units, which include that three-story apartment and the duplexes, and then they had the 10 acres of commercial. No one ever, ever protested the commercial, not then and not now. I've been reluctant to speak before this council about commercial development on Southwestern because I've been disappointed twice by city council votes in the recent past, and I'm relieved to see four new faces on the horseshoe for that. Our first experience was with the pit bull dog kennel, and the second was with the trucking company that is now on Southwestern. These two experiences are why we questioned the developer about the type of commercial he planned, not that it was commercial, but the type. We've been burned. The plan first presented to us had 266 plus 990 units, which equals 1,356 units. And if you calculate a minimum of two people per unit, that equals 2,712 persons entering onto Southwestern on only two streets. Blackwelder is a logical and safe consideration for some of this traffic. That's my personal opinion. I believe the developer plans to come back to you and ask for zoning to allow those three-story apartments, once he controls this R1 that he's asking for today. I suspect his plan never changed, just the method he uses in asking for the approval. And I understand there's another new plan today. The development presentation two weeks ago also never mentioned the homes south, where I live, and east of his proposed development in regard to the density. Some of the families directly south of this live on 20 acres, 10 acres, 5 acres. Some on the east side are 5 acres plus in side, size, and I didn't hear that included in your density calculations, that we have large acreages. Okay. We aren't afraid of AA zoning, as Mr. Box would lead you to believe. The southeast corner of 134th and Western used to be a feed store, McMar's. It's now a veterinarian office. I've had cattle get loose and roam onto my property from off of Blackwelder. Horses are now boarded and trained all over the east side of Western. An agricultural processing plant can't be scarier than a pit bull kennel or more annoying than a trucking company. Some of you had questions about the oil and gas concerns. These developers have been aware of the problems, they just chose to ignore them. Mr. Greenwell, Mr. Shadid, I did make an offer to purchase that 106 acres, just as you suggested. My offer took into account the wells and easement, and my price reflected such. This developer just paid too much money for the land that is usable. Now, he hopes to recoup by making small lots, zero lot lines, and three-story apartments, all at the expense of the quality of life for my neighborhood. And I really didn't have any plans for it. I probably would have made parks and some commercial. I just didn't. I wanted to, I wanted to do better for my home than what they're proposing to us. And I want to assure you, Councilman Shadid, that commercial development has always been expected in this area. I've lived there 30 years. We've always expected it. We just don't want any more light industrial trucking companies and dog kennels. We, the citizens of this ever, never, never protested the commercial development, and I appreciate the concept that commercial is needed to generate revenue to fund city services. Let me tell you all that the citizens on Southwestern, between 134th and 149th, do not have city water. We do not have city sewer. I can't imagine any commercial entity that is willing to use my water well, or especially my septic system with the lateral lines, as I have for over 30 years. I need to inject a thought right here. When mentioning the widening of Western, I don't think for one minute it was done for me or anyone who lives on Southwestern. If it were, it would have been done in 1989 and 2002, when they came and bought my easement. If you pass this as proposed today, you're going to create a traffic nightmare. If you allow those, just what's proposed, the 250 homes, to unleash, say, 500 cars onto Western at 7:30 a.m. each workday, it's going to be a nightmare. They proposed two entrances onto Western. Someone had asked about the protestors from the east side of Western, and I know this is in your packet, it's the petitions we passed out, and I'll, I know that, I need to speed up. Dr. Boyer, he had no response. He's commercial. Cartel owns, the next two tracks are going south. He's a protestant. His signature's on page three. Shrum is a resident, and we never get a response from Mrs. Shrum. Meridian Properties, a commercial entity? No response. 13660 Western Properties, commercial? No response. Discount Moving Commercial, protested, signed at page four. Dr. Rogers Residential, he protested. He's page one. Don Phillips, a resident, protested, page one. And Mr. Phillips, by the way, lives across the street from one of those, one of the only two entrances onto Western. Dr. Orr, his resident, he protested, signed it on page one. Then, on my side, Dale Bliss, he protested. So, anyone who had a vested interest in the quality of life out here is a protestant. Commercial entities, they don't live here. They go home to their nice homes in Ward 6 or Ward 7, and they don't live here. So, the people who live here have protested it. Ms. Allier asked a very good question. Why are we asking for a PUD and not an R1 today? I suspect that they'll come back and ask for those three-story apartments and duplexes and the zero lot lines when they have controlled the surrounding area, if you approve this today. And I'd like to assure you that if this remains AA, we aren't afraid of grazing animals out there. Yesterday?
Can you sum it up?
I am. I spoke with Jalal about the buffer. I'm sorry. Around the addition, he's talking--
How much more time do you need?
That long.
Okay. A minute?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. He talked about the eight-foot columns and the wood fencing, and I just, I had the concern too about who's going to take care of that. And I want you to know that we have tried to compromise with the developers. They keep switching the plan. I don't know what plan we're talking about today. I know the one I was presented with. I just know that 1,356 units on 80 and a half acres is too much. Where will these kids go to school? For over 30 years, my husband and I have had a peaceful, wonderful quality of life in South Oklahoma City, which I am daily grateful for. This is an area that we're proud of, and I hope that you would be proud of it, too. I don't want you, I want you to vote no on this, at least as presented today, because we've not seen a new plan. I mean, we're trying to compromise and deal with them, but we, they keep changing it, we don't. And I don't think we're too far apart. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. David, I would call you up, but I think, just to kind of wrap this up, I'd ask for any comments or questions from the members of the council.
Is this more public schools?
It is. Ed? One question, Mr. Brummett, if you could. Mr. Groves indicated that if this was R1, that it would, it would be passed by the District Court, but that he thought that because it was a PUD, it might be a different situation. I didn't hear how it would be a different situation. And so, I'd ask you what we talked about two weeks ago. This is supported, the city staff says that the density is supported by the comprehensive plan. Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding of the staff report. Yes, sir. I haven't had experience with PUDs. PUDs are, as Mr. Groves indicated, kind of a different animal. They are a negotiated zoning district. They're not a zoning district that is set out like in R1 and R2, and the applicant actually creates their own zoning district. I've never had a PUD appealed to the District Court, so I'm not sure how it would-- I've never had a PUD appealed to the district's court, so I'm not sure how it would receive that. Because it is a negotiated district, it is a little bit unusual, not like a traditional zoning district. I don't know if the court is going to engage in the negotiation process, which is really what the PUD is all about.
Kenny, do you have a thought about, so we've never had a PUD appealed to the district court?
Nothing I can recall, sir, no.
I recall one, but I don't recall what the result was. I think, I honestly don't recall. It's been so long ago. We seldom have PUDs because most of the time, the planning commission and council want developers to do PUDs because you can build in the additional amenities over just the straight zoning. So if they, for example, if they got R1 here, then it'd just be the straight R1 zoning, and all the basic minimums would apply. So the idea is to build in the additional amenities and whatever you want in the PUD. So that's why they seldom go to court.
Okay.
We had a PUD in my ward that was appealed to the district court. And the city ultimately prevailed, but they lost the first round to district court. And the PUD was approved at district court level. And we appealed on some basis, I don't recall what that was, and then we got one on appeal.
Mr. Box?
If I could just briefly. Dennis Box, I'm here with David on behalf of the applicant. I've had the opportunity for the last 24 years to teach land use law at Oklahoma City University. And although there might not be a lot of examples of cases that have been tried in district court, I can tell you around the country, the same factual pattern will be looked at by the court. It will be looked at in a standard R1 case, and they're going to look at the land use facts, they're going to look at the surrounding density, they're going to look at the comprehensive plan, they're going to look at what your planners say is appropriate. And in this case, all those match up to R1 residential development, plus the amenities that we've added, would mean that I think we would be successful before a district court. So you can call it a PUD and act like it's this mysterious thing that a court's going to review. Truth matter is, this is R1 with a lot of restrictions that we've added to it, and a court's going to look at it that way.
Sure.
I don't want to contradict Professor Box too much, but if you deny a PUD, what you're saying is, we do not wish to enter into this negotiated zoning district. It's in the nature of a contract. Now, if it goes to the district court, what is the standard of review? It's always the same. Was your decision arbitrary, unreasonable, capricious? Judged by the fairly debatable standard, which has been in effect in the United States since 1926, when Euclid versus Ambler was decided by the U.S. Supreme Court. If the issue is fairly debatable either way, the court will not interfere with your legislative decision. Isn't that so?
Dan?
Fairly debatable is the standard, isn't it?
That is the standard of review, yes.
No offense, Professor Box.
Eric, do you think that whether this has enough density, or whether it needs to be 7,000 feet or 7,500, do you think that's fairly debatable?
Yes. Yes. You could debate it all day long. And see, courts don't like to interfere with what legislatures do under our separation of powers doctrine in this country.
My concern is, we are going to debate it all day long.
I get the hint, Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
One brief point. The protesters have continued to say, we deserve better, we want better. Much of the protesters live in Calistoga. If you look at the subdivisions directly north of Calistoga and Tuscany, that were in place prior to when any of these folks built their homes, the typical lot size is 6,180 feet. So one would question why they didn't have a problem moving next to lots that were smaller than what we're proposing, but they would have a problem with something that exceeds what this neighborhood had to build. So from our perspective, we're actually more restrictive and a better community than what they moved right south of.
Okay. Well, David, can you address, they raised two points. One, that you didn't talk about stormwater runoff.
If you look at the map in front of you, several of the places marked as OS are detention areas. So they are addressed throughout the entire PUD. We have detention, and we meet all the city regulations.
What about the contention that you're going to get this passed, and then you're going to come in with multifamily apartments and later?
That is, the first I heard of that was from the protester. So I have not been told that, as the attorney representing this applicant, that that wasn't. The reason we dropped all that off is because we had already removed the multifamily. We had come back in with R1, ZL, and duplex. So the multifamily was dropped off months ago. So that's just a red herring to confuse the issues.
And you wouldn't be able to change it later?
If this PUD gets approved? No. It would be, we'd have to come back and rezone this tract to change it to the multifamily.
Right. All right. Thanks, David. How long are you going to be? Okay. All right, 30 seconds, and then we are going to keep it at horseshoe level at that point.
The OS that he refers to, his detention is in the 100-year floodplain. You cannot put stormwater detention feature in the storm, in the floodway. So he's misleading you.
Thanks. Okay, David, what's your preference here? Is there any, you want to leave it at the council?
Well, any other questions besides from Mr. Councilman Shadid? Because this will drag it. I'm kidding about that, no. Any other questions or comments from the council? I'm kidding. Any? Okay. Let's move forward then with respect to, just a couple of comments from me. The questions about, or the issue that's been brought up about the developer continuing to make changes, I think that's an indication of their willingness to work with the neighborhood. And maybe it's inexperience on my part, but I had tried to keep out of the negotiations until recently. And the issue about moving the minimum lot size up to 7,000 and getting the average lot size closer to 8,000 was certainly my recommendation. But again, I just, and the important point about the 8,000, again, this shows my lack of experience in zoning issues. That's something I can relate to, because I live in a neighborhood, and my lot is 8,200 square feet. And I think we live in a very nice neighborhood. It's, and so if this was to have an average of close to that, it would seem appropriate and reasonable to me. And that's the only suggestion I made. Prior to that, it was the developer trying to come into closer agreement with the wishes of the surrounding property owners. So, and I'd prefer that this be resolved among the participants. I don't think it's our job individually or as a body to try to reconcile differences among developers. And I'm going to ask this question of the two parties at this point, just because Ms. Muse brought up the fact that they appear to be so close. Is there any hope that the two sides could come to an agreement? And before you say anything, David, Eric, could you check with your other counterparts and see if they have an interest?
From our perspective, the answer is no. We've given for a year, and we agreed to everything you and I spoke about last night. And having dealt with this for a year, there's been no indication that the neighbors are willing to sit down and actually negotiate. So no, we've given everything we can give.
Thank you.
Yes, of course, there's hope, Councilman. And I dispute what David said, that they've given and given and given. They haven't. They've convinced you that they have, but they haven't. They've sawed off little pieces of it, but the design, the central design, has never really changed. And this 11,000, the average lot size of 8,000 square feet. If they would agree to that, that would go a long way. But a moment ago, when I asked David, will you go for that? He said, well, it's never been presented to us. So let's hear whether they would go for that. That would take a long way toward resolving this.
Okay. David, would you mind, and if you need time to address that?
With the way this will develop, it will be somewhere between 7,500 and 8,000 square feet. Agreeing that the average becomes difficult. So what we've tried to do is, by increasing the minimum lot size, that gets us closer to that desired density. And I think it's counterintuitive to wish that we came in with a straight R1, to get denied, to go to district court, then to be able to come in with the 6,000 square foot lots. So...
I mean, David, to my mind, if you've agreed that some of them are going to be 10,000 feet...
11,000 on the side.
11,000 on the side, and the rest of them are seven, then you're going to be at eight.
We're going to be right around there.
That's a mathematical issue. That's not anything else.
And I'm not, I'm not good at math, but you're right. With the south being 11,000, if the lots up by the large green space are also larger lots, so we believe that we're going to be right in there, between the 7,500 and eight.
Well, if he believes it, why doesn't he commit to it? He won't commit to it.
All right. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you all. And I do appreciate everybody's participation in this effort, and comments from members of the council, as well as the numerous emails and phone calls I've received over the past several months on this matter. It certainly is on a lot of people's minds. And I guess I'm going to make a recommendation that we move forward with the proposal. But I am going to offer this, too. I'm a little bit, I guess, too idealistic when Mr. Groves suggested that we do incorporate revised rules. That does set aside property like this. And I think, Councilman Shadid, it actually kind of sets well with your preference of trying to put a greater emphasis on development inside the core. And 134th really sets outside of the core. There's no way, even if it is zoned urban development, it's, I mean, we're just next door to Moore and just down the street from Norman. So I'm going to recommend that we approve this. However, I just want to clarify this. I'm going to vote no on that, so if that's not inappropriate. Francis, I'm looking to you. So I'll move it forward just to get us to a vote, because we do need to resolve this. I am disappointed that we are so close, we cannot reach a resolution, but I understand the delays. To accept it? Yeah, to approve it. No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm recommending approval.
His motion is to approve.
But I'm going to vote against it. Yeah, a yes will be to approve it.
No, to approve the motion.
To approve the applicant. And so if you vote yes, you're going to approve the applicant.
We'll have a motion in a second. Okay. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Item 8E has been struck. An item 8F is an ordinance that's going to be introduced today. Bob Teener is here to kind of lead us through the process.
Good morning, or afternoon. I want, our memo pretty much touched on every, all our amendments. I'll just talk about a few of them that we know have kind of been an issue in the past, and then if there's questions at the end. These amendments, we're proposing a microbrewery provision that we've never had before. That's kind of a new thing that's come along. This doesn't amend, this still allows restaurants with the breweries. It just establishes a minimum number of gallons once produced. You have to be in a different use unit classification. We're establishing regulations on mods and pods, which are basically storage buildings that people use when they're going to move or remodel. We now have a time limit on these, so we can enforce those when they come up. We're proposing an alternate pervious paving surface for storage yards. An example of that would be large pipe yards that store their pipes on gravel. Currently, the ordinance would require that to be paved. And what this does, it allows, it only requires paving where the public will be and their customer parking. We're going to add the farmer's market district to not require parking. They're one of the areas in downtown that has been required parking. That was just kind of an oversight that we're addressing in this. We're also addressing our front yard fencing and large lots and agricultural has never allowed brick columns. They've always had to go to the board of adjustment for variance. We're allowing a provision for lots over an acre to be able to do the brick columns with the wrought iron fences by right. And those are kind of the high points. This is the introduction today, and it'll be back for a public hearing, a final hearing in August. So if there's any questions...
Item, again, just being introduced today, and we set a public hearing for July 30th, and then another opportunity for council to vote on August 13. So anyone who's watching us on television and has input they want to make to this, July 30th would be the day to come to the council meeting. Have a motion to accept this and move it along through the system? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Bob. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here, other than those that have signed up, that have shown up to discuss any item listed under 8G, dilapidated structures? Okay, I have two people that have signed up to speak.
Hi, I'm Valerie West.
Thanks for your patience this morning. We'll need your name and address.
Okay, Valerie West, 12917 Spring Creek Court. And I'm here regarding the house at 220 Southeast 41st. And we have torn down the shed, and we are having a dumpster delivered today, and we would just like to have a week extension to remove the shed from the property.
Okay. Well, that's in Ward 7. How much time do you need to get this taken care of?
One to two weeks.
Okay, I think we'll be fine then, won't we, Charles?
We don't show a permit for the demolition at all.
You need a permit to...
A permit to tear down the shed and that yard.
Is that right, Charles?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Can you lead her through that process and tell her what she needs to do?
Okay.
If that's taken care of in short term, do you see any problem in getting rid of this, say, within 30 days?
No, no problem.
Okay, sounds like we're going to be okay then. Why don't you just work with Charles and go through the process?
Okay, thank you.
You want to hear from them? All right, John?
She has a UB on too, also, right?
A what?
Unsecured on the property, is that the house?
Right. Let me go to that.
Well, we'll deal with that in a minute then. You might want to stick around. All right, Emily Garman?
Hello, my name is Emily Garman. I live at 2247 Northwest 43rd Street. I own the home directly across the street from 2244 Northwest 43rd Street. This house burned and basically imploded on itself several months ago. At the time of this, when this happened, there was no power or water at the house. The residents were running a generator inside the home. And since this house burned, the only thing that has been taken, only kind of action been taken to secure or preserve the house or its contents is a paper tarp that has been put over one of the broken garage doors. The house is completely open in the back, the roof is basically gone, and the fence is on the ground. With the immense rainfall we've had in May and early June, the burned contents of the house have been opened to the elements and are completely destroyed. The house is dangerous. People come and go at all hours of the day, traipsing through the house, taking out metal and any other salvageable items. There are a lot of children who live in apartments nearby. They walk back and forth, and they dare each other to go inside and into the yard. Now that the weather is so hot, the house reeks. It is rotting. The mosquitoes are much worse than in previous years. None of our neighbors can go outside and enjoy their own space because the stench and the pests are so bad. In the time since this house burned, no action has been taken to rehabilitate or preserve the property or its contents by any insurance companies... the property or its contents by any insurance companies, mortgage companies, or the homeowners who live in Texas. I represent my neighbors in requesting this house be demolished immediately for the safety and cleanliness of our neighborhood.
Charles, what are our legal opportunities here to help her out?
Well, we agree with her. I mean, it's in bad shape. We have been in contact, I believe. One of the construction company contacted us, but at that point, that's all that's happened. There's been no fire restoration permit that's been sought after or granted from our records.
How soon can we tear it down?
It'd probably take about 45 days, earliest.
At the earliest? Do you have the legal authority to move forward on that?
If you give it to me, I do, yes. If you declare it.
What happens if we do nothing and you don't hear from the other owner?
If we do nothing and leave it on?
Well, if we leave it on...
We start the process, and we go out for bid, of course. At the end of the 30-day period that's granted by the state as a requirement, after that, we actually award a bid and proceed with demolition.
So I guess that's where I was getting...we have to wait 30 days?
Yes, that's state law.
Okay. So we have to wait 30 days, and then we can demolish it immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Emily?
The notice that was placed on the door said it would, I think they were given until August 3rd, so that would be 30 days approximately. So I think we'd be all just fine with it.
Charles, we'll see if we can't get to it. If we don't have anything in 30 days, let's get after it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh huh, thanks, Emily. Anyone else signed up to speak to a property on the dilapidated structures list? All right, let's cast our votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8H, and this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Valerie?
Valerie West, 12917 Spring Creek Court.
Okay.
Yeah. Regarding the house on 220 Southeast 41st. It had two broken windows, and we have boarded those until we replaced them with windows. And there was an outdoor cellar, and we placed a door on it and covered it and secured it.
So it doesn't look like this anymore?
Oh, no. I have pictures of the outdoor cellar where we put a door on it, and those have been boarded...
220, is this 14?
Until we're going to plan on selling the house, and we're going to be putting windows in it soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I...
Yeah, it doesn't look like that.
I looked away. Those first pictures looked quite alarming.
Yeah.
So what does it look like today?
I have two pictures here of, from yesterday, of that window. Yeah, and that's been cleaned up. There's a door there.
When did you clean it up?
We've been cleaning it up for the past, like, two months.
Okay, well, these pictures were taken on June 24th.
Okay. I have pictures from yesterday.
Can we see them?
Yeah.
Why don't you pass them to John over there? This is a Ward 7 property. What are y'all hoping to do with the property?
We're going to sell it.
Okay, so when do you propose to sell this property? When are you going to sell this property?
We're going to put it up for sale probably in the next two or three weeks.
Is the property secured today, Charles?
I don't know.
It wasn't on the 23rd?
Wasn't when we checked it by...we always go back and recheck them before we do anything, of course, and we will on this one because of the...
John, why don't we leave it on, which, you know, gives her 30 days to take care of it, but why don't we send somebody out to make sure it doesn't look like those pictures on the 23rd? That looked really dangerous.
Very.
We have a dumpster coming out when we're going to remove the shed.
I mean, that open door that went down to some sort of below-ground...
Yeah, there's a shelter in the backyard that we've covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just going to make sure they go out and make sure that you've secured that?
Yes, that's fine.
But you've got to take care of this.
Yes.
I mean, it's on the clock right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to vote on the unsecured structures? Need a motion? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, we're on to item 8I. We've already voted on item 8I1, which was the medical board's budget for the year, and Doug Dollar is here to lead us through items 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yes, item 2 is the Emsa budget for FY 13 and 14, and Steve Williamson is here if there are any questions for Emsa regarding the budget. But part of that budget includes a rate increase, beginning August 1st, to $1,500 for emergency transport. The current rate is $1,300, and the budget anticipates an increase to $1,500. And then the rate per mile that's charged for emergency transport is also proposed to be increased from $9 to $12. And so that's incorporated in the budget that the trust acted on. Item 3, that requires explicit action from the council to actually enact those rate increases. And in keeping with the city manager report that we did back in April, related to our medical service program and that monthly fee that we charge residents who have the total care program, we envisioned a $1,500 rate starting this fiscal, this coming fiscal year, and then $1,800 next year. And so the Emsa board included that in their projections out for their five-year forecast, that $1,500 rate beginning this year, $1,800 next year. And so the next item, then, item 4, is to enact those changes that we discussed during the city manager report to the medical service program, which is the monthly fee that's on the utility bill, raising the fee from $3.65 a month now to $4.35 starting this October, going to $4.40 and then to $4.45 in the following year after that, to keep up with the costs of providing medical, emergency medical service. Then finally, the last item that's on the agenda is the agreement that we do each year with Emsa to basically have a contract between what they're going to provide to us, what we're going to provide to them through the medical service program, and making it clear that the capital that's purchased by Emsa would be the property of the City of Oklahoma City and would be leased back to Emsa as part of their providing the service. So that's kind of a quick overview of these four items that are before you. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on those.
Doug, I apologize. I did not understand when we talked at the Emsa board meeting last Wednesday about this rate increase. I thought that that also was going to be part of the ordinance that would be heard three times. The utility increase from $3.65 to $4.35, that's just being introduced today.
That's correct.
And we'll hear it two more times.
Right, that one will be heard two more times. The rate increase is just simply approved on a single vote. It's been a resolution, is how we've done those in the past.
Would you have a problem if we continued that until one of these other future hearings? Because I just, I'm not prepared. I thought that we were going to have three looks at that. I didn't know that the final decision was going to be today. And I do have some concerns, and I just need to look at some data.
I mean, and I defer to Steve Williamson. My only concern would be they're looking at implementing that $1,500 rate August 1st, and that starts to get us awfully close to being able to do that on August 1st. Obviously, it could be implemented later, we just don't have as much revenue coming in.
How about two weeks?
I think that's...
I think that's probably doable. It'll be a little tight on their side of things, but I think that's probably doable, if that's our...
Okay. One thing that I just learned last Wednesday, I don't know how, I just heard for the first time that the opt-in rate, we focused a lot on Tulsa, and we've talked about having a media campaign to try and clear up confusion, because the Tulsa World has run most of these articles, and so the focus has been on Tulsa, and the Tulsa City Council has asked for, you know, media campaigns and PR campaigns to the people in Tulsa. But actually, the opt-in rate for the people of Tulsa is about 91%, and they just concluded the window, and they're expecting that to increase. The opt-in rate in Oklahoma City, I understand, is about 80%.
That's correct.
So significantly lower. That means 20% of the people of Oklahoma City are not opting in to the total care program. And so this increase of a rate of almost 50% up to $1,800, I would be curious how many, you know, of the people that were charging that rate, how many have insurance and don't have insurance? What type of insurance do they have? What has been the record in the past?
I mean, we'd have to get with Emsa to do some research on that, because I don't know, I mean, their payer mix is fairly well-established in terms of what percentages, Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, private pay. But I don't know what that would be, of how many of those people have total care through the city utility bill or not. I think that would take some more research to determine. But even the folks who are on, say, Medicare or Medicaid do have deductibles that they're responsible for if they're not on the total care program.
Here's my concern, and I'll just, and Steve, if you want to help me understand better, but one problem I have with healthcare delivery in general is that we come up with these really fictitious numbers of what the bill is. And the insurance companies are never going to pay that full amount, right? You can charge $1,800, but Medicare's going to pay $600. You could charge $2,500, and Medicare's going to pay $600. They all have an allowable, and that's how much they're going to pay. But if you don't have insurance, and you go to the emergency room, or you oftentimes are assessed the full amount, and so it never has seemed fair to me that a citizen who decides to self-insure by not having insurance, or would pay $1,800 when Medicare, when no insurance company would allow, would have an allowable that high. I understand wanting to increase your allowable so that you're never below, you know, you wouldn't want an insurance company that would pay 1,200, and you're only charging $1,000, you'd be losing out on money. But are you, you know, disproportionately punishing people or going after amounts that you would never realistically collect from an insurance company?
Healthcare financing is frustrating, but the fact of the matter is, the reason why our rate, for example, goes to $1,300 to $1,500 is our patient mix, which we don't control. Well, I mean by that, 60% are Medicare and welfare, 20% have nothing, and 20% have commercial insurance. Now, our commercial rate is not high as far as other commercial rates in the state of Oklahoma or nationally. So the $1,800 will be, most of the part, paid. But we see 10 cents on every dollar we raise our rates, that's all, because so much of the patients we transport are on government-paid services, or don't have any insurance at all and pay very little. So when you look at those large increases, keep in mind, it's only because so many of our patients are on Medicare and Medicaid. If we had a different patient mix, we wouldn't have that high a rate. And you're correct, there is a difference, a huge difference in cash payments and insurance payments, but that's in why the system won't survive and why it's not sustainable, but it is fact today. So just keep any doors open, your practice or other practices, that's why the rates are the way they are.
But do you have a thought about why there's this discrepancy between the number of people opting in in Oklahoma City versus Tulsa?
Well, they always had less here, even when AmCare had their subscription service. I don't think it's anything unusual when you look back historically. Now, I don't know if that's because of the more people here work for the state. I don't know what the demographic difference is, but it's been constant, less, and it was less when we came here in 1990.
Would you mind if we just looked at this for two weeks and then brought it right back?
Yeah, I would ask, though, that it doesn't go any further, because we have a lot to do to get our bills out, and we're going to be that much more behind if we don't get it approved.
Do we need to do 2014 now, or can we just do next year? I mean, do we need, this is asking for two years out?
That was the request of the city. I would like to have the next fiscal year as soon as possible.
Yeah, the thought was, that's what we had discussed during the city manager report. We didn't have a vote on that, but that was kind of the direction we had, was to look at a stair-step fee for our monthly total care subscribers, and that included both years of the fee increase. If we don't have that second fee increase, at least, by the time we vote on that total care program, we're going to have to either assume that's a shorter term, not last the three years, or put it at a higher rate in case we don't get that rate increase.
But that would be an option, is to, two weeks from now, just get next year done, and then spend the next year figuring out...
Right, yes.
...what we want to do the next year. Okay, thanks.
And just as a point of information, just in case it comes up, Norman currently charges about $1,540 for emergency transport, and Midwest City between $2,000 and $2,100 for emergency transport is their base rate. So let's put those in perspective.
And I'd like to make a request. Ed, you know, the point you made about comparing it, say, to a hospital that might charge a non-insured individual what they would consider its standard rate, but then they negotiate lower amounts with the insurance companies and Medicare. Part of the healthcare bill eliminated that process for hospitals. Now, I don't think it impacted individual physicians, but it does prevent hospitals from charging a non-common amount for private pay citizens, and perhaps Emsa needs to look to make sure they're not subject to that same requirement, that they can't charge a different amount for non-insured or private pay individuals that they would for people that fall within the insurance claim. One other issue is that if you have a car accident and it's litigated, you can't talk about, you're not allowed to talk about what insurance companies would actually allow. You can only talk about the amount that's charged, and that's another reason that people elevate their charges, is because every once in a while, in litigated motor vehicle accidents, they get the full amount. I just want to make sure that that's not an issue distorting the amounts either.
Well, it looks to me like we can approve 2. Do we need to defer 3 for a couple of weeks?
I think it's fine.
Okay, what do we do with 4 and 5 at that point?
Well, I think we need to...
Defer those as well?
No.
Can pass those?
I have a question about 2.
Okay.
Is the money that I've heard that it's going to be spent on the public relations campaign in Tulsa, is that charged against the Tulsa side, or is it charged against the whole group?
Right, that's only on the eastern...
You know, Ed raises what I think is an interesting situation, even if it is charged to the Tulsa side. With them having a 91% opt-in rate, and we have an 80% opt-in rate, I'm just a little hard-pressed to see why we'd throw that much money at a campaign that's got to be, I mean, you're going, there's a diminishing return. There's a certain amount of people that are not going to do it. You could show, you could throw $2.5 million at that 9%, and you might not get any more to show up. So, I mean, if, I don't, I'm just, I guess that's not our problem if it's going to be paid for out of the Tulsa side, but it just seems to me a waste of money. I just can't imagine a business doing that, that had shareholders, because the odds of increasing revenues are just so infinitesimal when you're already at 91%. To me, 91% opt-in is amazing. That's an amazing opt-in rate. And to throw another quarter of a million dollars, that trying to do something doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I understand the Tulsa council asked for it, but I'm still hard-pressed to understand why they would ask for it. Well, I think there's other residual factors that will play also, because of the media and the focus groups we did, we're having some reluctance on some attorneys for timely payment and some other issues that we hope to help rectify with some of this public relations. I have asked for it to be as little as possible, because I concur that at some point, you do have diminishing returns. But to help the image...
I could save you a lot of money, you can just send Laura over to Tulsa for a while and let her talk to people.
I've heard otherwise here.
She did it for this end of the turnpike, and she could do it for the other one, too.
Larry?
Yeah, Steve, a quick question. Tulsa is on an opt-in basis, correct? In other words, I, as a citizen of Tulsa, have to make a conscious decision to continue my policy with you, total care, for the next year?
But if you don't do anything, it's what you were last year, or you opt in.
So you're, it's opt in, it's opt out.
Okay, so it's opt out.
You're in it unless you opt out, right?
No, no, you have to, they follow the same system you do here now.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I meant to say.
Okay, I'm in Tulsa right now for this past year.
Yes, right.
If I do nothing, what happens?
What were you, the year before?
I was in.
Then you're in automatically.
Okay, that's, okay, right there, okay? But, okay, but is it fair to say that over the last six months to a year, Tulsans have been, I've been, as a Tulsa citizen, been subjected to a number of articles and information that have been kind of tainted against Emsa?
Correct.
Okay? And so I might have the propensity to say, hey, this thing is a bad deal, I'm going to get out. And is it not one of the reasons why the trustees of Emsa... And is it not one of the reasons why the trustees of Emsa approved this public relations/marketing campaign to try to retain the 91% rather than, and, and if they get to 92, 93, 94, that's great, but they're trying to take some proactive action to keep that 91 from going to 90, 89, or 88?
That's correct. Same thing, if a councilman is getting a lot of flack in the newspaper, could we allocate a quarter of a million dollars to promote the, I just think it's, that, that just, to me, that's a waste of money. Point is, that nobody else would do that unless it wasn't your money. You wouldn't do it with your own money.
All right, Steve, thanks. All right, how about a motion, then, to approve item 8I2, which is to receive the budget? All right, we're voting to receive the budget on item 8I2. Passed unanimously. Ed, you want to make a, a motion on item 8I3 to defer that for two weeks?
Move to defer that for two weeks, please.
Okay, cast your votes, passed unanimously. And I guess we're good to go on four and five, is that right? Okay, how about a motion there to approve item four? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. And then item five? Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Thanks, Doug. All right, we're on to item 8J. It's to hold the Dew Draper Twice Duathlon in early July on Lake Draper. Pete, you okay with this? All right, I'll take that as a motion in a second. Is there anyone here representing this organization? All right, let's vote. Passed unanimously. Item 8K is for a payment of an obligation to urban renewal.
Mayor, when we did the redevelopment deal with Devon, to, to close out of, of the COPT facilities, there had to be a $2, $2 million payment made, and that money came from urban renewal, and in the agreement, there were terms that if there were available funds out of TIFF8, that $2 million would be returned to urban renewal. Now that we have the valuation of the building, we have permanent financing in place for TIFF8, and the fact that 80% plus of the, of the public construction is done, we feel confident that we do have adequate funds available to make this repayment back to urban renewal. So, I mean, this is actually cash out, and this would be actual cash back in.
Okay, comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes on 8K, passed unanimously. Item 8L is the much-discussed senior wellness centers. I think everybody here is probably going to want to talk, so why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we hear from city manager, kind of give us a one-minute, two-minute overview on how we got to today? And then we'll hear from the council members from the two wards, I see you, John, we'll hear from John, and then Pat, and I know Pete's been kind of providing the oversight on the MAPS III boards, and so he probably ought to check in, and then we'll just kind of open it up for discussion from there.
Back in, I think it was, was '12, we decided to go out for RFPs for partners in the wellness center. And we received proposals, and they were reviewed by a selection committee of MAPS, of staff and MAPS III folks, and it was decided that those were inadequate proposals at that point in time. So those were rejected, and we had a number of meetings with stakeholders, and we tried to come up with consensus to go forward with that. And with that, those meetings, we put out a second RFP that went out around the first of this year. And when those proposals came in, we received four proposals. One was from City County Health, and some other friends, Putnam City Baptist Church, one was from North Care with Variety Health, and one was from Val Air. And the selection committee met and went through the process, and they eliminated Val Air, so they left three to be, get further information with. And so they did more due diligence with City County Health, with Putnam City Baptist, and with, with North Care slash Variety, and they came back out of the selection committee with a non-unanimous recommendation to go forward with City County Health and Putnam City Baptist. And so last week, that recommendation went to the subcommittee for the MAPS III Wellness Center Subcommittee. And at the subcommittee, the recommendation of going with those two was a 4-4 vote at the subcommittee, so that failed. And then there was a vote to go with a singular of City County Health proposal, and that passed on a 4-3 vote. And the reason I'm telling you all this is just because of the history of, of, I've never seen anything quite like this before. Then it went to the large, the overall MAPS Advisory Committee, the, the big board, last Thursday, and because of what the posted recommendation was to go with the two recommendations, that was a recommendation on the table, they voted on that, and that was a 5-5 vote, so that failed by a 5-5 vote. And so I've never seen quite so many tie votes on, on a project in, in my life. And then they came back with a recommendation to go with the singular vote with City County Health, and that was approved with an 8-2 vote, and that is the recommendation that is before you today. Pete, is that...
And we can review both of the items, the council can look at both of them.
Well, sure, you, yeah, you can, sure.
Okay.
Require an amendment, add a second?
Yes, right now, it's just like what happened at, at, at the subcommittee, the recommendation was to go to singular vote, they made a substitute motion to go, or to go with the two, they made a substitute recommendation to go with the singular.
Well, I, I...
So if you want to go the other way, you can make that...
I'd like to move that we amend this to include the Baptist Church proposal.
Okay, let's, let's hear from, from John on the Ward 7, and then we'll entertain, do we need, we'll go ahead and see, is there a second there on? Okay, so we have a second on that motion. John, why don't you go ahead and speak to...
I do have some strong concerns about this whole wellness process, number one, the location of this proposed process, the City County Wellness Center, and I think they have done an excellent job for its wellness and what they're trying to do. I think it's good. But however, the location of this particular facility is away from where seniors are, so I have a huge problem with it. Then, I have not seen the proposal. It is in my ward, and I, I would like to chance to see the proposal, and I would actually like to see this item deferred for a couple of weeks, so I would have time to look at this proposal. And then, another issue, City County Health Department has not addressed the issue for its public transportation. And the last couple of days, I have been asked a question by several board members about the, the whole transportation issue. When I got elected, I had two government entities wanting public transportation to their facility. Social Security Administration, and also City County Health Department. And my position has been, if you build it away from the people, if you build it away from public transportation, and you want public transportation at your facility, you need to pay some cost to that. The city should not bear the cost alone. For Social Security Administration, it was going to cost an estimate of $350,000 a year. And we told them that they was going to have to pay some cost to that. The Social Security Administration decided to, with the help of the city, tried to negotiate with the, the city of Edmond for the link. And so here we are, left with Oklahoma City County Health Department, again, wanting, wanting public transportation to their facility. They would not have had this problem for its public transportation if they built their facility on a bus route, or built it around neighborhoods. And they chose to build their facility on 63rd, where the only neighborhood you have is the RV park. The RV park. So I do have some concerns as it relates to building with MAPS III a senior wellness center that seniors cannot walk to. And so I have been very vocal about this. Again, I, I, City County is doing a good job, but again, the location is a huge concern of mine. And so I've said for its public transportation, if City County Health Department wants public transportation there, that they need to chip in. Route 19, in the beginning, early parts of 1990, then Councilwoman Willa Johnson said that she wanted bus services to the Green Passers area. So she teamed up with then the late county commissioner Shirley Darrow, for the county and the city to work together to provide public transportation in Green Passers area, which is the eastern part of Ward 7. So they got together, and right now, we still have that type of agreement. And matter of fact, county commissioner Willa Johnson and I talked about the counties, what the county's going to do this budget year for its providing public transportation in that area. They have agreed to, for Route 19, $80,000 plus to keep that route going. So I'm saying today, and I'm going to say this publicly, if Oklahoma City County want public transportation there to their facility, and they need it, they need to pay something towards it. The city should not bear the cost alone, because what this, it, it ends up with, anybody who wants to build a facility away from the people, they can come to the city and say, hey, I want public transportation, but don't want to give a dime to it. I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. So I do have a, a issue there, and I, I believe the public transportation piece needs to be worked out before we vote on this resolution, in my view, because it holds City County Health Department feet to the fire for its providing public transportation to this particular area. So I just want to make sure, I say publicly, that transportation needs to be provided, and City County Health Department needs to step up to the plate, because you built, again, a facility away from the people. I have a huge issue with that. You build a facility that's meant for the people, you use 73111 zip code, okay? And, and clearly, 73111 is the most unhealthy zip code. So why did you build a facility, again, away from the people who need it the most? So I do have huge concerns about it. Then, the question of it is subsidies for, for this particular proposal. Well, I, we, we have subsidies for any and everything, seems to be, but to offer subsidies for a location that is away from the people, I have a huge issue with this. So I, I would actually prefer this to be deferred for a couple of weeks, so I have actually time to, to look at the proposal, and also visit with people in that area. Because, I'm sorry, I do not agree with the location. I do not, because you build away from the people. There's nothing south, there, there's no neighborhood south of this location within miles. You look west of this facility, the only neighborhood that you have east of it, the closest one, is Lake Alumina. I have a huge issue with that. So, again, I think this issue should be deferred, so we can talk about the subsidies, and so we can also talk about the location. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Need to talk to the parliamentarian. Parliamentarian, what happens to my motion?
Well, you, it's still going to be voted on.
Okay.
These are separate issues.
I was confused.
Yeah. Who else wants to speak? Pete, why don't, why don't you speak to the, to the issue?
Let me tell you, this was a very unusual process. I mean, I, I, as the, as the manager said, I've never seen a process that was as conflicted in the, going through the voting part as this one was. The fact is, I think there were two recommendations because staff is trying to catch up with the schedule. I don't believe there was ever an intention on the part of the subcommittee for them to come back with two recommendations. I think they came back with two because we're trying to catch up. The staff dominated the initial selection process. There's more of them than there are subcommittee members on that staff. And I, I, I don't, I don't mean that in any negative way, other, because I understand that's part of their work, that's their charge to keep the thing on schedule, but I think that's why we got two, myself. I don't think, I think they would have come forward with one had there, had it not been. But the subcommittee voted 4 to 4, which meant that it failed, and then when the motion was made to come forward with one, that was, the vote was positive. The same thing happened when it came to the, I'm repeating what's already been said, but I, I think I, I need to do that for emphasis. That indicates the degree of disagreement that there, the degree of disagreement there was about going forward this, with this facility. I voted to go forward with only one, and the reason I did, and it's easy to do this when you're the only councilman in the room, you can speak for the council, you know, now I can't do that today. But, but I said at the time that I did not believe the council was ready to go forward with two projects. We're still, have a trip planned four or five days from now to go look at projects, so it's still in that formulation stage. I have, I, I share James's, or, excuse me, John's views on the location. The problem, John, is this, when you, when, the way we've proposed this thing, we're looking for partners. When the partners come back, we don't have any control who the partners are. City County comes back, they were a partner. Putnam City Baptist comes back, they're a part, so they have proposed it at that location. I mean, we don't, we don't, if we're going to change that, we've got to change the whole way we do it. We've got to say the city's going to build them. We've got to go completely different. If we're looking for a partner and asking the partner to build it on their property, then the partner's going to build it on their property, and we're going to be faced with this time after time. Given the circumstances, given the fact that that zip code is the worst health outcomes this zip code in the state, that weighed fairly heavily on my willingness to go ahead and vote for it, because, but I don't like the location. I do think, I, I couldn't agree with you more, that the idea that, that social service agencies would move away from the people they're going to serve, and then expect to be subsidized by the city of Oklahoma City, is a mistake. I think that's a mistake, and I, if I'd have been down on the subcommittee part, I would have reck, I would have rejected that, because I didn't like, I don't like it. John, I agree with you 100%. The idea was that, that trans, public transportation is an important element of providing this service. Now, one thing I did find out, and I made that argument, and I did find this out, that the staff will tell you, that they've done extensive research into this, and very, very, very few people ride public transportation to these facilities. Not just in cities like Oklahoma City that has a fairly inadequate system, but cities that have a robust system. The pu, the public does not ride, the, the people that are served by these things does not use public transportation. Is that fair, David? Is that what your research shows?
Yes, sir, it, it is, our consultants looked at that, and, and they found that seniors were somewhat intimidated, or scared of public transportation.
So, part of the problem with this is, in my opinion, is these things weren't vetted very well, and I've said this before, you've heard me say this, this is not new, these, some of these projects weren't vetted very well. So we're vetting them as we go along, and I, I understand that's what MAPS has historically done. It doesn't make it any, doesn't make me any more comfortable with the process that we're doing it that way. I think, we, we started out talking about five, we've recently talked about four mostly, and then we've talked about three maybe, because of the costs and so forth.
Who's talked about three? I hadn't heard.
The, the subcommittee talks about three, and it's based on costs. And based on a lack of response from partners. I mean, that, given, given this, if we're going to be stuck to this method, and that's, that's, I don't mean it that way, if we, if we, we continue to pursue this path, then I think we may well, we may well only find three acceptable partners, or two acceptable partners. That, that's possible, I think, because our parameters are such that we're saying, you got to build it, it's got to be on your side, and all that. I think there are just a lot of restrictions that we've placed on it that are going to make it, make it difficult to get people to propose to it. And for that reason, I was not in favor of going forward with two. I just didn't see why we would go, if two constitutes half, and potentially two-thirds of the total we're going to build, that to do them without a proper stringing them out a little bit, so we learn a little bit as we go along, just did not seem to me to be a reasonable way to do it. I thought, I frankly thought there were three good proposals. I, I thought the, the North Care proposal was a good proposal. I thought it, it meant, it probably fulfilled more of the things that I perceived the proposal ought to do than any of the rest of them. It got short-shifted because, I think, because it was being operated by a mental health And the idea was that who would want to go to facilities operated by a mental he, well, health, you know, where maybe there might be somebody mentally ill there? Well, we all show up on this horseshoe every Tuesday, and nobody raises that question. You know, I mean, I, I, I think that was a, that was a mistake, I think. I don't think, but, but I didn't get a vote down there, and I didn't vote on the subcommittee either. The only thing I did was, like I said, I took the license to speak for all nine of us, because none of else, none of the rest of you were there. If you'd have been there, I probably wouldn't have done that, but, but I'm not proposing to do that here today. But I, that's, that's the basic, and that was the thought... But that's, that's the basic, and that was the thought, I think, at the subcommittee, and I think that was the thought of the majority of the people, or at least the equal division at both levels, is that, it's too complicated to go forward with two.
Pete, may I ask a question? Or, I'm sorry.
I was gonna go to Ed next, but if you wanted to talk to Pete.
And I'm preaching now, I'm going, I've gone past explaining it, but I do, but I was involved in it, and I, and I, that's why I did. And that's why I voted the way I did when I had the vote. If I'd have voted the other way, we'd have gone forward with two of them at the, because as the council's rep on the advisory board, I mean, on the MAPS, MAPS advisory board, I have a vote, and I voted to go forward with one. But that's the reason I did, and it doesn't have anything to do with evaluating the, each of the projects, other than the fact that I did feel like, when I look at location, if I have to pick between two that I don't think are either one, the kind of location I would have picked if I had the ability to say, build one here, build one there, I thought the one northeast was better of the two. But I agree with you about the, about where they're building.
Okay, Ed.
I would just plead with the council, I can only speak for myself. I'm caught off guard a little bit. I, as a healthcare provider, I know North Care, Variety Care, City-County Health, Ballard, I couldn't have a thirty-second conversation with you about Putnam and City Baptist. I mean, I'm, I'm not ready to vote. I would plead with the council that we delay this by two or even four weeks. I just, I don't have enough information, and not even close. I mean, I didn't, so this is really the first I'm hearing about the outline of, I mean, I just, I need more time.
Okay.
Well, let me make one more comment in that regard. I didn't. If we don't do this, this will be the first time we have voted against the recommendation of those bodies. Is it this?
No.
When is that?
We voted against one on the implementation schedule. Back in July.
Well, okay, okay. And that's what got us into this.
David?
Well, that kind of leads me into my question, you know, because, for example, Pete, you serving on the committee, you've had an opportunity to look at both of those two proposals.
I've just been once.
Okay.
I'm not an expert.
I'm sorry, I, let me remove you from the discussion then. But as Councilman Shandy said, we, the rest of us don't have much information on the two, and so for us to vote on accepting a proposal at this point in time, without maybe accepting both of them, to where we could look and compare the two, I think that creates a better opportunity for us to compare and contrast and all that, so.
The potential partners are here today, so I think if we would, we would do the whole, and seeing how long they've been here, we ought to use this opportunity to ask questions, and whether or not we vote today or not, I think most of the questions that you might have might be able to be addressed today. And keep in mind also, that passing this resolution merely begins the process of negotiation on a contract, including the site, and this council will have another opportunity to approve that contract. So if you don't like the result of the negotiation, you'll have another opportunity to exert your opinion by, by way of a vote. Yeah, Larry?
I hate to disagree with you, Nick, but I think, before I would vote on anything, the, the location has to be a part of that, and I think some information needs to be supplied, to me as a councilman. For example, I heard something this, today, that I don't, I don't know whether it's correct or not. Who is gonna build the center? Are, is not the city gonna do it?
Yes.
Yeah, but Pete was saying that...
On their property, on property owned by them.
But I thought it had to be on property owned by us.
Yeah, property owned by us.
See, there's, there's, I just used an example. There's some misconceptions floating around here, that I think some information needs. I'd like to hear from, from these, and I'd like to see, myself...
It has to be built on our property.
Right. I'd like to see the, the actual reply that they made, so that I can make an determination in my mind, whether I think A, B, or C is a, is a good choice. That's just what I'd like to come from.
I agree with that, but let me tell you about the property. We didn't get one proposal that wanted to build on property we already had. We got all the proposals wanting to build it on their property, and then use a deed or a lease or something, somehow to get it over to us, to somehow comply with the law that says we can't spend money on anybody else's property.
Right.
But it's gonna be right in the middle of their campus, the church's campus, North Care's campus, so don't get too far on that splitting hairs thing, because, I agree with you, you're right. It has to be our property, but it is our property in the sense that nor, you wouldn't normally think of it being our property, because it's gonna be right in the middle of somebody else's campus.
Okay, Meg? Nah.
Just a general comment, more or less, because I don't feel as well-informed as I wish I was also. This came to us, Pete, in kind of a different process, it seems, from all the rest of them, which have typically been a unanimous vote from a subcommittee, and then a unanimous vote from the oversight committee. So I don't, I'm not of the opinion that it really came to us with a recommendation. It's almost like a punt from the planning department, that just comes to us to try to make a decision. And I'd like to hear from both of them, but I'd really like to be able to sit down, maybe the way we do with some of these other things, before we get to the horseshoe and have some small group meetings, and be a lot better informed, if it's gonna come without a unanimous recommendation. If it's gonna be, you know, an issue where we're really gonna have to pull the trigger, I'd like to be much better informed before I have to vote on any of them. I'd like to hear from everybody, not just one.
Well, why don't we hear from them? That's a perfect segue. Gary, you wanna come forward?
Sure.
Gary is the, if I have your title wrong, correct me, executive director of the City-County Board of Health?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And Gary's been working with us for several years now, on determining how we can partner, and specifically, Gary's been spending several years working on, on our health in the county, and has created a campus that's under construction right now in northeast Oklahoma City. We had, already had a groundbreaking and a ribbon-cutting out there. And the proposal, as I understand, I'm gonna be very general, and then kind of let you, you talk, is, is to add a senior wellness center to this campus of health-related entities that, that the city-county is working with some private sector people to put together. And the location is roughly sixty-third between...
MLK, a half mile east of MLK.
Sixty-third and Martin Luther King.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Gary, with that, take it in any direction you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Certainly understand your questions and concerns, and happy to provide any information that we can to you. Just a short note about what the campus is and why it's there. It's a fifty-four acre tract of land. It's a half mile east of MLK on Sixty-third Street. It's right at the confluence of I-35 and I-44. So our, our idea was that we really wanted interstate locations, because we were not only gonna serve the zip code seven-three-one-one-one, but also a five, at least a five-mile perimeter thereof, and so we, we wanted to have some good access. It is a half mile east of the bus line. Our full intention is to, to work with the city to extend the service to this center, and we think, we think certainly that could be accomplished easily enough. There's also, we also work with a number of partners, community partners in the agency. Some of them actually are already housed in the, in our, in our initial facility there. Additionally, we have partners there, the whole idea of this is focused on wellness. First of all, that's the whole idea of the campus, and focusing on the worst zip code in Oklahoma City, as you say, in the state of Oklahoma, and focusing on those things that are killing people and making them sick, and that's tobacco. It would be a lack of exercise, improper diet, and the mental health aspects of alcohol and substance abuse. That's what's killing seventy percent of the people, and much of that is preventable. And so therefore, our partners are OU Medicine on our campus. This is on our campus. OU Medicine, they're already there, they're already seeing patients. North Care, who was an applicant and provided us a letter of support, is also a partner, and be providing services there in an integrated, integrated healthcare model. So that's on the campus itself. We also have walking trails and exercise stations are already constructed there. We have a children's playground, a kaboom, which is, was funded by Blue Cross Blue Shield. We are planning and the process of having sports fields for kids and for adults and for others there. So it's addressing all four of those primary causes of premature death. And so we think that's, in particularly dealing with higher-risk folks, we think that's probably why we can really make a difference, in intervening and causing further, further chronic disease. We, we think that this campus is a national model, it's been recognized as such. We think it has the potential to be a real, a real shining star for Oklahoma City, and by taking a real proactive approach. We partner with a number of folks, as far as we've already discussed, and we have, we've met with a number of neighborhood groups, and, and, and we've talked with them, and, and so we're really talking about, with churches and other folks who have transportation systems available, there's currently a senior transportation system that's being developed in Oklahoma City area. And so we want to work with all those entities. Partnerships are very important with us, and we have over a hundred partners in our Wellness Now Coalition, which are our mayor co-chairs. And so we think that the city leadership and your vision was tremendous in creating the senior wellness centers to begin with, and we're willing to work with you to, to be a part in implementing that, if you, if you so choose. It'll be a perfect addition to what's already out there and what's being planned. It's been embraced by the community. When we had our community open house at that facility, we had over, somewhere between six and eight hundred people on a Saturday morning that came out, and were part of that, of that community event. We're gonna have a running event out there this fall, and so it's been embraced, from our standpoint, it's been embraced by the community, and the communities in the surrounding area is, is looking forward to, to seeing something very positive in, in their community. So we're willing to work with you, and do what we can to, to make it happen. One of the other reasons that we located our campus there is because not only do we have efforts to improve health in Oklahoma City, but we're tasked with the responsibility of protecting health as well. And so that involves not only like food safety and transmittal, transmittable diseases and things of that nature, but also the bioterrorism, chemical and radiological terrorism. And so we needed a center that had, was easily accessible by interstate, in case we had to coordinate a major event, major public health event here in Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County. So that's one of the side issues, but we look forward to working with you if you choose to go in that direction.
Your master plan includes what? What, what else would be associated or alongside of this geographically?
We're working with OSU Extension Service. They have to be off their facility in two years, and we're working with them, they'd like to relocate there.
What would they be doing there?
OSU Extension, they have a master gardener program, they have five hundred master gardeners, and they do nutrition education, and so we think that's very, a very good fit, and we see potentially the master gardeners perhaps even teaming up with neighborhood youth in a mentoring program. We think that would be a positive as well. We also think that there's a possibility between the senior citizen, the senior wellness center, and some mentoring opportunities there with neighborhood youth as well. By the way, our, our, our partner on the senior wellness center is the Y, and so you have a unique blend of what we can bring to the table, and that's all the wellness services, along with right next door, primary care, mental health, and all the other services that'll be available. But the Y, of course, their specialty is aquatics and exercise, and they're, they're a co-applicant, or they're a partner with us on this venture.
Gary, what was the nitty-gritty piece of this? The size of the subsidy? What were you looking for from the city in terms of operating subsidies? Or were you?
Well, yeah, when we did the budgets, we said that that, that was one of the things that we wanted to look at, and I think we were, I, I think, Dave, refresh my memory on that. Somewhere around, what was the operating subsidy that we had suggested? Less than, less than two hundred thousand, and that's open. I think one of the questions that came up during this process, the, the thing that is the expense of operating expense are the aquatics. It's a swimming pool. That's a high, that's a high cost.
Gary, may I ask a question?
Sure.
The two hundred thousand dollar subsidy, or less than two hundred thousand dollars, would that be a continuing subsidy? Or would it ramp down or disappear?
Well, we, we would hope through, through partnerships, memberships in the community, and sponsorships in the community, and through revenues that can be brought in, we would hope that that, that could, could be lessened. And, and of course, this is all subject to negotiation, as far as, you know, one of the questions that came up in the subcommittee was, if you didn't get a city subsidy, would it be a deal breaker? And we said, no. I mean, we think, we feel strongly enough that this is a good addition to the campus that's already there, and to the overall opportunities to improve health in that area, that, that we're willing to sit down and talk about that. So it's, to us, it's not about the money, it's about, it's about working together in partnerships to provide something that will be a real asset to the community, and would be effective in, in helping to be a good place to come, but also have an opportunity to improve health for the area as well.
Okay, quick question, Dr. Cox. Is it true that City-County will be building other facilities and other warts, similar to the campus on Sixty-third?
Counselor, good question. Our, our long-range plan does call for other wellness campuses. It may not be on the same scale as this one, this is fifty-four acres, and it's hard to find a fifty-four acre tract of land. By the way, we, we bought that fifty-four acre tract of land in an urban area for a million dollars, which we thought was a pretty good, pretty good buy. But we do, to answer your question, we, we think the second greatest need, area of need is South Oklahoma City, and then northwest.
I will hope, when you all start looking at those other facilities, that you all work closely with the council representation, the councilmen or councilwoman in that area, so you all can work out the difficulties that you and I are gonna have to work out with this current facility, because I'm gonna, I, I see in a year or two, that you all are gonna have issues. The more and more you all move social service organizations to that campus, the biggest issue that people and those social service organizations are going to have is, guess what? Transportation.
Word.
So we're gonna have to have some long discussions, especially when you talk about youth, after-school programs, and stuff like that. You are, the biggest issue is gonna be transportation. But again, you all built that campus away from entities. You talk about the acres, fifty-four acres, I can show you on Twenty-third and I-35, hundreds of acres that are available. In other places, Thirty-six and, and Kelly, that we have acreages available. So I mean, it is what it is for the location of the facility, but like I said, I, transportation's gonna be a major issue, and, and that I want to commit me right now, that you and I are gonna work together for us, public transportation or transportation period, because that's gonna be a problem.
Oh, absolutely, and, and as I mentioned, we have every, we have every belief that we're gonna get that situation taken care of, as far as public transportation, we think that's gonna happen, and we're, we're willing to work to make it happen.
Meg?
Kind of a general comment, we're talking a lot about social service agency kinds of things, and I'm trying to go back to when we put this program together in the first place, and were our senior wellness centers designed to be social service agencies, or was it an idea to do something else? I mean, that's kind of a philosophical question.
I think this was more of a unique opportunity to, to be involved and take care of that, that lowest-performing zip code, and to find a site in that lowest-performing zip code.
I love the idea of the focus on wellness, and whether we're, you know, beginning to think about partnering gardeners and food nutrition, and, you know, all those sorts of things, but I just, this is, this is something I think, Pete, we're all wrestling with, is that continuum of what these centers look like and who they are serving.
Right, right, and, and another deal with this location, now, I know several senior places that are way south of this location. It would have been easier to, to build a facility near where seniors live, where they could actually walk to. build a facility near, uh, where seniors live, where they could actually walk to the facility, uh, and, and so forth like that. So like I said, I mean, you all's campus is on sixty-third. Um, but again, you all plan on having a facility away from where seniors live and where seniors can access it.
All right. John, thanks. Yeah, Larry?
Quick question, sir. Uh, if for some reason the council decided that we wanted the first senior wellness center to be in location A and it was not at the sixty-third campus review, would you still be interested in partnering with us if we built it somewhere else in, in the town?
I think we'd be, we'd be interested in sitting down and talking to you about that. I mean, our, our long-range goal, as I said, is our next long-range goal is to have a presence in South Oklahoma City and Northwest Oklahoma City. So we just felt like, I mean, quite frankly, that this would be an excellent addition to that campus, number one. Um, and then number two, it was in the worst health outcome zip code of Oklahoma City and county. Uh, and we also felt that there are opportunities, not only for a, a good place to visit, uh, and to come and, 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 um, have camaraderie and, and, and all of that and have a, a, a good time, a fellowship. But also if we had the opportunity for those that were interested of, of screening folks and health screenings and things of that nature, uh, to find someone that had high blood pressure or prediabetes or something of that nature, that, uh, heart disease that they didn't know that they had, uh, it's an opportunity to, to intervene in, in that situation, uh, so that we can prevent heart disease death and, and diabetes and, and, you know, things of that nature. So we think there's a great offer, opportunity here, particularly for high risk, to intervene and improve the health of that, that whole area.
Ed?
Would you deed the land to the city or how, how would you?
Well, since we are a city-county health department, uh, I mean, we have some, I, I don't know if it's called a, a legal fiction or not, but, uh, we'd either, I would say either whatever the city required as far as a lease or a setting aside of certain amount of the property or-
That's a detail to be worked out, but there are things that could be pursued, whether it's an intergovernmental agreement, whether it's a long-term lease, the, the, or whether it's, it could be the property set aside. That's just something we're going to have to sit down and-
Would a, would a long-term lease involve transfer funds from the city to city-county? I mean, we would pay?
Not necessarily.
Okay. All right. Can, can you talk about, I mean, the, the scope and nature of the aquatic services? And then are you, are you planning on be, um, providing healthcare delivery? I mean, are you engaging in, in healthcare delivery or talk about those two things?
Okay. Thank you. Yes. As far as the aquatics, the Y, that, of course, that's what they do. And so we just depend on them to provide that part of, of the service. But yeah, the discussion has been, uh, on an exercise pool, a lap pool, and also a therapeutic pool as well, as well as, as, as well as the fitness center and as well as the classes and all that the Y does. And then of course, we do a lot of wellness classes as well, the diabetes management thing, smoking cessation, things of that nature. Uh, and I'm sorry, the second part of your question.
But will you engage in healthcare delivery?
Yes.
I mean, you said you'd be screening for diabetes and things like that. I mean, will you be treating?
Well, not, not on that, not, not probably in that center, but right next door is OU Medicine and North Care, who will have mental health and, uh, primary care services that will be available. Uh, we're, we're very shortly beginning construction of a partner building, which would be an extended, extended, uh, OU Medicine presence there as well as North Care Pharmacy and things of that nature that would be available. So they probably wouldn't be in that facility, but they would be right next door.
So is that, so you would screen and then refer to OU next door or?
Well, we could screen and, and refer to wherever they wanted to go, but the OU Medicine would be there, would be available.
Okay.
As well as North Care.
Thank you.
Any other questions over there for Gary? Yeah, Pat?
A comment. Since we're, we're going to reduce these proposals to a contract, uh, would it be helpful to wait until we had two contracts in hand and compare the benefits to it? Because I know, I, I read the, the proposal last night from the Putnam City Baptist Church people and they addressed some of the problems we're talking about. They addressed transportation, they addressed aquatic facilities, they addressed medical delivery items, uh, and, uh, some of the questions we're asking, we're concerned about are in that. Now, if they stay in it, that's good and well, but I think I would hate to approve a proposal without seeing what the final negotiations are going to-
Well, Jim, how would you?
Well, we're in the process, I mean, we're in the process where, where you're authorizing staff to negotiate is, is what step is, whether it's one or two, uh, deals, you're authorizing staff to go forward. So we're going to work out a lot of these deals about, about the, the type of subsidy, about the services that will be provided, about how the real estate w- would work. Um, those are, those are, none of those are-
So if we approve two projects- -respondable details. If we approved two projects where you go forward with on today, you would essentially begin negotiating with both parties to come up with a contract.
That's correct.
At what point would council involvement be appropriate? Would it be at the negotiation level when your, your staff is trying to work on it?
Well, well, we've done different things in the past. I mean, we've actually had council observers be involved in negotiations in, in the past as we did in the Thunder Contract. I don't know if this raises to that level.
I think the council, though, the council's struggling with what sort of information they need before they ask you all to start negotiating.
We'd be pleased to, you know, set up small, uh, meeting, small groups with, with the proposers if, if that's desirable.
Well, any more questions for Gary and then we'll, we'll bring up the-
One thing that his conversation reminded me of though is that one point in time, we thought there was a possibility that one entity could operate all of them. We discussed that at some length and there are certain synergies, certain economies of scale that might go along with that. If we go forward with two, we've, we've, we've stripped that away as a possibility. And that's another reason that going forward with one until we figure out what we're going to do seemed to make sense to me.
Okay. Anything else for Gary? Okay. Gary, thanks very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. And I think, uh, Putnam City Baptist Church, William Holsey?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Bill Fleming and I'll be speaking on behalf of Putnam City Baptist Church. We believe we put together an extraordinary proposal, uh, and, uh, we think it has a lot of, uh, very positive things going for it. Uh, we did address one of the issues, Councilman Pettis, that you had. Uh, we've arranged with all of the, uh, retirement centers or most of the retirement centers in, in a area to provide transportation to our centers so that we can have that. We also have a large group of volunteers. So for those people who, uh, aren't able to ride from a retirement center, we would try to provide transportation in some way for them also. Uh, we have partnered with several different people. We partnered with the Butterfield Foundation. They provide the Open Arms Clinic and we're proposing that we would have a free senior clinic there also. And, uh, that would be, uh, probably primarily a screening clinic, blood pressure, things of that nature, but, uh, the opportunity to catch those things early and, uh, and it would be free of charge. We, uh, are proposing a, a full-blown aquatic center, a gym. Uh, we think that along with that, mental health is extremely important. So we're proposing that we would have all types of courses, uh, and classes available to promote mental health. We, we believe diet is extremely important, so we would also being, uh, be giving, uh, giving classes on that. One of the neat aspects of our proposal, we believe that, you know, you can build a wellness center and you can enroll people, but if they don't come and use it, then, then that's all for naught. So what, part of our proposal is provide life coaches for all of these people. And because we're a volunteer organization, because we have access to other volunteer organizations to do that, we'll be training and equipping life coaches and assigning one of those to each person who becomes a member. And they will follow up with them to try to help them stay in sync with their program, whatever that might be, and to try to keep them coming and committed to, uh, the wellness center. We recognize that there's a tremendous need in Oklahoma City. It just blows my mind every time I pick up the newspaper and we're rated as such an unhealthy state. We got that bad press and that bad publicity. And we believe that we're in a position to try to help change that and change the dynamic of that. Another thing that we have to offer is we have a fantastic location. We have a thirty-one acre campus at a hundred and fourteenth and North Rockwell. This center would be on the far northeast corner of that campus. They would have access, uh, directly to Rockwell. And, uh, in addition to that, we're in the process of a strategic plan for our facility also that will involve walking trails and other things. So people would be able to take advantage of that. And, uh, we just think that Oklahoma City is ready for more than, uh, one senior wellness center right now. We voted on this proposal several years ago and we've all been anxiously anticipating some of these things coming to fruition. And it's true that we could put it off and do one and try it and see how it works and everything else. But if it doesn't work well, then you've got one failure. If you tried two of them, you have two opportunities to see what really works well. And if you look at both of them, then you can take the things that work well from each one of them and incorporate them into the other one also. And so we think building two at, uh, or, or going forward with two negotiations is certainly appropriate for that reason also. And so I would just encourage you to, uh, to move forward with the original recommendation from the staff that, uh, you enter into negotiations with both of us.
What, what's your governing board look like?
We have a, we have a, for the wellness center, we would, uh, it would be a, a nonprofit corporation with a board of directors. Uh, two of those, uh, three of those members would be from our facility, from our church, from our organization. Uh, the others would be, uh, and there are a total of nine of them. The others would be from outside of that. We asked that, uh, the city appoint a member to that board so that they could sit on that board of directors also. Uh, and, uh, we have engaged Leslie Austin for some. If you may know her, she is a director of the Rogers Wellness Center. And she's going to be, uh, a, a kind of a, a distant advisor and ex officio board member, but we've, we've, uh, consulted with her frequently and on a number of items and she's been very helpful. Uh, we have, uh, Dr. Lynn Myers will be on, uh, the board and, uh, we have, uh, excuse me. I'm, I'm drawing a blank on, uh, from, uh, the Baptist Center, uh, Bill Paris. Bill Paris, who is, uh, in charge of, uh, the Baptist Retirement Center is on the board and he's very committed to helping us engage other senior organizations and retirement centers so that we can get them plugged into it. Uh, we have, uh, the individual who runs the Pacer Center has agreed to be on our board. And, uh, so we have a very broad range of board members and they would be the ones that would be in charge.
Is Debbie Hampton from the United Way on the board?
Uh, yes. She is either committed to be on the board or else to have one of her close associates to be on the board.
Okay.
I would, uh, I would love for all of you to read our proposal. We think it stands alone and, and, and what we presented. We think it was very, very good.
No, I've, I've read it. It's extraordinary. Uh, um, other questions for?
Can I, may I address the potential elephant in the room, which is diversity and, um, you know, being sure we reach out to the community at large and not just a small segment of the community?
Well, and I understand that. We went to great lengths to ensure, we understand that the wellness center is a secular organization. And, uh, this is a, we think it's a win-win for our church. One of the things that we, uh, we presented our proposal, and you'll see it if you, if you read it, is we're a growing church, we're an active church and, and, uh, and we always need more space. So one of the things that we proposed is that we would use that facility on Sunday when it's not open to the public and, uh, the church would lease that space for eight thousand dollars a month. So that, uh, that would provide almost a hundred thousand dollars a year in operating revenue. And we've gone to great lengths to make sure that our board members, which is, that would be a standalone board, uh, did not have such a connection to the church that would become a religious organization. And we would give you our promise and our guarantee that would not happen.
When I first read their proposal, I was concerned that we didn't have enough senior citizens who needed that kind of help in, in Ward Eight. It's a very, fairly affluent ward. However, as they outline in their proposal, there's a number of retirement facilities within a mile or two of that area that, uh, where those people aren't country club members. They could use a facility like this. And I think it's, it's, it was a surprise, but I don't, when I think about it, we shouldn't have been surprised because that population is there and they're underserved right now. And, uh, I, I think Bill's got a great idea. Go forward with both proposals.
We, we believe there's a very large number of, uh, senior citizens and, and, and fifty and up in that area. And you would also probably be surprised to find that there is a very large number of underserved citizens in that community. We have a lot of people who, uh, are below the poverty line. We volunteer at one of the, uh, schools just a mile or so from the church and over ninety percent of the kids in that school are come from families that are under the poverty line. So, uh, so there's a need, there's both a need for senior citizens. There's also a need for those underserved. We, uh, are proposing that we would provide, we are, we're, we will operate on a fee basis because you have to pay for that facility. We're proposing that we would offer scholarships to anyone who's unable to pay for that membership and, uh, we would provide, uh, service to them. Also think it's important that they fit in. So we're going a step farther and this is still in the development stages, but we believe that they need to look like the other people when they come to that center also. So we think that we're going to have to do something about, uh, workout outfits for them and things of that nature, just so that they don't feel, uh, you know, uh, like they're the odd man out or something. And, uh, we just, uh, we put a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of work into it. We have some great partners and we, we just think we could do the city a really, really great job with, uh, with the wellness center representing Oklahoma City.
Like I said, I, I don't think we run a huge risk, Mayor, if we vote to move forward to begin to negotiate a contract, but I do think we take a huge risk if we're not better informed as this council about what's going to be in that contract. So, um, you know, I, I think the idea of sitting down quickly with some group meetings to talk a lot more in depth about what we're discussing is the best plan.
David?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment again. I'm sorry, but I've not read the details of either proposals, but I would like to explore both of them. And if one of the ways is to accept or enter into negotiations with both of them, that's okay. Or if we think that the deferral process for a couple of weeks is more appropriate, that's okay as well. But I would also like to say, I do have experience working with a, uh, faith-based organization, uh, Good Shepherd Ministries here in Oklahoma City. The initial focus was to provide free healthcare, uh, as well as dental care. That's now expanded into a forty-hour program. Then the organization went beyond that, providing, uh, food services to neighborhoods that don't have grocery store, healthy food, uh, products. And then now more recently, they've entered into a furniture bank, uh, which is especially important with respect to the storms that we've encountered. They're, they're providing millions of dollars of furniture to people who were, uh, left homeless and, uh, as a result of the tornadoes and storms during the month of May. And, uh, one thing I will say, and I don't mean to, this to be critical of from a governmental organization, but with a faith-based organization, you certainly anticipate having a high level of compassion included in the services that are provided. Now, I'm not saying that other organizations don't do that, but I do think it's a strong component in a faith-based organization. And again, I'd like to see us either look or, or negotiate under, with both entities or defer the, uh, proposal until we get more information. Thank you.
Okay. Ed?
Uh, I had to ask you the same question. In terms of the land, would you, how, how would you envision that working?
Well, our, our proposal, uh, asks that the city purchase that land and they would own it. And then, and of course, the, the facility would also have the use of the trails and all the other amenities that we would have on campus. We initially asked for a one hundred thousand dollar subsidy for year one. The reason we did that, we wanted to use that to help train life coaches and get everything up and operation, get it ready to go. That was the only subsidy that we asked for. Uh, uh, we would figure out some other way to do it if we need to. We'd still like for the city to, to partner up with us, getting that event kicked off and doing it right and advertising and marketing and promotion and then training, but, uh-
So the, I'm sorry, so the city would buy the land from you?
Yes.
For, for what cost?
Uh, whatever the appraised value would be.
How many acres do we need to buy?
Probably three, three to five acres. Uh, it's unique because of the fact that we have parking and everything adjacent and there are a lot of amenities that could be, be used that the city would not have to, uh, to build or use, like the walking trails and the, the other things that we, we plan on putting in. And, uh, and so there- And, and so there are other resources there, so you wouldn't have to buy as much land as, as you might if you were just going to go out and do the whole thing.
Do you, do you know comps in there?
In that regard, let me interject something. All the budgets have land acquisition costs in the budgets. So wherever it's located, it's already budgeted amount of money. It's, it's a little short of, I think the first estimate passes a couple, close to $2 million of it for the land acquisition.
On this first project, we have $1 million that's allocated for, for land.
So I guess one thing philosophically I would want to get, the city has so much land, Urban Renewal has so much land, to spend a million or $2 million on land acquisition when maybe we could get a more robust aquatic center or provide more services? I mean, that's, that's just something I need to, to get my, I'm not, I'm not saying, I just need more time to think about it. The other thing, you know, Meg, Meg describes as an elephant in the room. I mean, I, and I'm not saying necessarily that I have a problem with it either, but I really need to think about, I mean, I guess it has caught me off guard philosophically, the idea of using taxpayer dollars and government partnering with a religious institution, not, and I don't, I don't, not familiar with the, what is it? Butter?
The Butterfield Foundation.
Butterfield Foundation. I don't know any, I don't know, I apologize. I don't know about them. I haven't read the proposal. I apologize. Nobody's given it to me to read before today. I don't know anything about the Butterfield Foundation. But I, is, I mean, that, that seems like a significant paradigm shift. I mean, a significant policy position that, that I'd want to at least think about and read about and dialogue about.
Well, in terms of proposals, we didn't eliminate faith-based organizations.
I'm not, I'm not saying, but I, it's just to me, it's not...
This is why we were getting responses from them, because we did not eliminate them for that competition.
Right. We're, but we're not, I'm just imagining, I, frankly, I can't imagine some, not having some backlash from other Christian denominations, from other religions, from other agnostics or those who are not. I, I just, I'm imagining that that's a possibility at least, and I'd like to try and think that through. It's not that we're putting it on city land and then an institution is coming in and managing it. We're putting it on, next to the church. The church is going to come in and use it on Sundays while we're not there.
They're going to pay for it.
Yeah, they're going to pay for it. But I mean, it's, is it going to have religious insignia? I mean, what, what's it going to look like on the inside? I mean, I just need, please, I, I need two or four weeks to really, this, this to me seems like a paradigm shift, and I just need to read about it and think about it and dialogue about it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add one thing real quick. Also, city-county is partnering with YMCA, which is typically, or is...
Which stands for.
Right.
And I'd like to address the issue as well. At the same time, Putnam City Baptist Church has an asset that we want to utilize for the community. We're making that available, obviously through a purchase, but we want that to be used. Our community needs a wellness center. This will not be a faith-based operation. It would be a totally secular operated. It'll be Healthy Living, Inc., a separate 501(c)(3). Putnam City Baptist Church will have nothing to do with the operation. We will have two board members sitting on that board that will have a voice, but it will strictly run as a secular entity, as a wellness center. So it will not be a faith-based, and it is at Putnam City Baptist Church running the facility. It will be a community-run facility. It will be very diverse. It will not be even people of faith that will be operating or working within it. It'll be people of, of any background. Atheists would be welcome to be a part of serving with us alongside of that as well. So during those operations, after hours, we want to lease it to our advantage, and that's when it would be faith-based at that point.
And it'd be open to any group?
Any group, obviously.
Any one of the, that wanted to lease it?
It will be a city-run, city-operated situation.
Will it be no religious insignias or anything? One of, one of the things that we talked about, how we would use that on Sundays and after hours, is we would have to have portable signage that we would set up on Sunday so when people came in, we could direct them to where the meeting areas would be and so forth as that. That would be taken down and stored during the week, and there would be no, you know, no, nothing at all to connect it to a religious organization at all.
With respect to the issue about the Butterfield Foundation, that was created upon the sale of Deaconess Hospital, similar to the Presbyterian Foundation being created upon the sale of the hospital to HCA. So it's funds that are available, and the foundation has chosen to place those funds into health-related organizations, like Good Shepherd receives funding from that, and they're out providing free health care, again, food for those who can't afford it as well as now furniture. So the main focus is on health care and healthy living and those types of issues, since it's, you know, proceeds from the sale of a hospital.
I, I believe they also provide services at the West Town campus as well.
I would like to say also that, that obviously the reason we want to do this is, is we do believe that we can make, have an impact and help change people's lives for the better. And religious organizations and their members are generally are very compassionate people, and that was evidenced by the tornado. They were the first groups on the ground pretty much when that went through. And, you know, it's hard, it's hard to see the citizens of Oklahoma City live long, healthy lives, and we think that we can hands-on do that and help make, make a difference in that, so.
Any other questions here? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Can we go on the motion?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the proposal by the Putnam City Baptist Church and get the stamp.
We're amending the resolution to include them in negotiations.
On this proposal? So this is an amendment to the resolution?
If that's, if that's the motion, I don't think that's necessary. I don't think it's necessary to make a decision today that we want to go forward with two. Why are we doing that? I mean, we're going to continue it and talk...
This is, this is to go forward with one.
Why not just, why not just continue the situation where we are and make that decision after we get the facts that we're talking about getting? Why would we, why would we want to pre-decide that we're going to go forward with two when nobody below that did?
There's a motion on the table.
Okay, well, I'm, I know, I'm speaking against it.
All right.
Well, but wait, wait a minute. Pete, this motion does not approve either of these two proposals. This motion doesn't say we're going to do two. This motion says we're going to look at two proposals and decide on one or two at the time.
I understand exactly what it does. But it's contrary to what was recommended by the board below it and the board below that, and there's no reason to do it. Why not just continue this matter for another two weeks or four weeks and make all those decisions at the same time? I mean, why would we want to piecemeal it out? My, is my...
We're not piecemealing it out, though. We're making a...
Well, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm going to vote against it because I don't think it's a good idea to go forward with two. And that's what I'm arguing. It's not a good idea to go forward with two.
We hear you.
That's a piece of a decision that could be made later after we discuss all this. Why would we make the decision ahead of time we're going to go forward with two when we, when nobody below us agreed to do that?
Pete, we are not making a decision to go forward with two. That's not my motion. My motion is to include the second one in the contract negotiation. It doesn't say we're going to go forward with two.
We're not going to start contract negotiations unless, if we, if we continue this for a couple of weeks, we're not going to even start them.
Would it be possible to vote on John's motion for a deferral or...
Well, we have a motion on the table. We need to, we need to vote on it. I'm a little unclear on what Pat's motion is, though, so...
My motion is to include the Putnam City Baptist proposal in our contract negotiation.
You want to, you want to combine the two?
I want to have both of them in there, yeah. Not combine them, but both of them in this...
You would be amending the resolution before you to add Putnam Church, so you would negotiate with both of them.
So are you suggesting additionally that staff begin negotiations with them?
Yes, that's my, this resolution, as I understand it, for the, for the health, county health association, authorized the staff to go forward with negotiations.
Let the city clerk correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you'll have, actually have two motions. This is a motion to amend the resolution before you, and if, then that will either pass or fail. Then whatever's before you then, you would make a motion to approve that or possibly defer it.
Pat, can I ask you, would you be willing to withdraw, withdraw your, your motion to allow the council to see who's ready and not ready to vote if we, if the council wants a deferral and then...
Time out. We're not approving either installation to be one of the city's senior, senior wellness center.
I understand, but it might be that the council's not even prepared to vote yes or no on whether we want to go forward with contract negotiations.
Well, we, it was reviewed by the, the subcommittee and the committee, the overall committee, and they, they turned it down, but that was maybe a, as Pete pointed out earlier, that maybe not was, that may not have been based entirely on a rejection. Just they thought mechanically that was the way to do it.
I think what Pat's, Pat's recommending, and this is the way the clerk and I understand it, is that we now combine the two into looking at, into going forward to look at two. And then, over the next two weeks, four weeks, whatever we decide, the council can continue to engage and, and read the proposals, and then we can meet again and, and decide whether or not to vote on two or one or none.
Because Pete's comment about the cost is important. We won't know what the cost is until we get a negotiated contract.
That's true. Okay.
So, so we're going to vote to amend it, and then we could possibly vote to defer?
Well, I suspect at that point, we have a motion to defer.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to avenge it.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passes seven, two. Okay. Now is there a, a motion on what has been discussed as a deferral?
I move to defer for four weeks.
A question, Your Honor. What are we deferring? I don't, I mean, I don't mean that sarcastically.
Well, it's John's motion. John, what are you, what are you intending to defer? You're, you're intending to defer the decision on whether or not we ask staff to, to enter negotiations.
Yes.
So this will give the council four weeks to learn more about it.
Yes.
And possibly have additional conversations with these proposers.
We click these two together. He's deferring the amendment resolution.
Two weeks, four weeks? I know we're in, kind of in summer aspect. I'm, I'm going to be at both, so...
I'd like four.
Four? Okay. Four good people time. John, your, your proposal to defer for four weeks?
Yes.
Oh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. And that item is deferred five, four. Approve five, four.
I think how lucky you just did, I'm really impressed.
You're impressed, I'm confused.
All right. Item eight M is an extension of our contract agreements with Public Safety.
And these are extensions on all of three of our bargain units until such time that we're able to successfully negotiate a new contract for fiscal year.
Second. Okay. Cast your votes on eight M one. Passed unanimously. Motion on eight M two. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight M three. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item eight N, I understand we do not need executive session?
Right.
All right, how about a motion to strike eight N?
Motion to strike.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight O, I understand we do not need executive session?
No.
Motion to strike?
But we need to approve the resolution.
Right.
But we need to approve, so I need a motion to approve the resolution on eight O. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight P, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
All right, a motion to strike. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight Q, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes, but it'll be short.
Okay.
Move to executive session.
All right, cast your votes. Item eight Q moves to executive session. Item eight R, I understand we do need executive session?
Correct.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight S?
We'll do that some other time.
Okay. How about a motion to strike eight S then? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight T is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight T?
Where's the item?
All right. Cast your votes. And item eight T passed unanimously. Item nine A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under the item listed under nine A? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Mayor, we need to go back to item P. No, item N and approve the resolution. Move we approve the resolution. In one, thank you.
Okay. Cast your votes on eight N. Passed unanimously. All right, we're now on items from council, and Pete, you've been working from the judiciary committee's point of view on our, our judges.
The first one is item A, which is the ordinance relating to terms of office. We discussed that earlier, where we're trying to stagger them, and that's just, that's what this first one is.
Right.
I'd move, I'd move the first.
All right, any comments or questions then on this item eight A? Did we, what about the amendment? This is an extra item?
No. Well, that's a different item.
This is different? Okay.
Cindy can address the amendment.
All right, so we're voting on item eight A two? Is that right?
What item is that?
Ten A two, I'm sorry.
The amendment. The ordinance amendment is changing June 30th to July 1st. That's all it does. And, and so one term will end and one term begin on the same day. It's like at midnight, essentially.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Item ten B is a resolution appointing Judge James as the chief municipal judge and, no, that's not right. Item B is just appointing Judge James for the first two-year term, and Judge Austin and Judge Morgan for the three-year terms.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item ten C?
C is appointing Judge James as the presiding judge.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight D?
And under the, what we talked, we talked about earlier, that we're going to rotate the presiding judge, and this appoints Judge Morgan as the presiding judge for the first year.
All right.
Vice presiding, excuse me.
Move the item.
Okay.
Question?
Passed unanimously. You have a question?
I did.
But it's not, it's, we've already done it, so it's too late for the question.
Okay. Item eight E?
E is an increase in salaries for all the presiding, the judges, all of them. It raises, it's a 3.1% increase. It's based on what's happened to the, all the other city employees over the past two years. I'd move it.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight F?
F is a fee. We're increasing the fee for special judges. The ordinance presently says that we, we paid $50 for a day. That often was a half-day, but that's really not an adequate amount for, to get somebody to come in and spend a morning there, so we've raised that to $100, which is still not adequate, but as long as people are lining up to do it, well, we might as well take advantage of it, so.
So that was a, a motion and an editorial comment?
That's a motion, right.
All right, cast your votes.
Can't, you can't do without the editorial.
Passed unanimously. And Pete, thanks for all your work on that. We, we also have an extra item here to enter into executive session.
Yes, and we will need the executive session. It will be really short.
All right, you want to make, is that your motion?
I've moved it.
To move that extra item into executive session? Cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. All right, we're on items from council. James, do you have anything for us today? Ed, Larry, Pete, David?
I know we were retired, but I just want to thank some people that really put together a great program this past Saturday. First, the Urban Land Institute. Second, the Oklahoma City's Office of Sustainability, Jennifer Gooden, and members of our staff. We also had Dan Burden come in and perform a walkability and placemaking workshop and We also had Dan Burden come in and perform a walkability and place-making workshop and audit of I-240, and if that area can be improved from a walkability and place-making standpoint in any place in Oklahoma City can, just because of the challenges having an interstate system right there creates, it also provides some opportunities. We got some great ideas, some local developers are interested and want to continue with this process, and so, again, I just want to thank everybody, as well as Debbie Martin from the city council's office for helping put all this together, but everybody that was there, it was just a great time, and I think it's going to benefit Oklahoma City in general and South Oklahoma City in particular for many, many, many years to come. Thank you.
All right, Meg?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be very quick, but I had hoped at 1:00 today to be able to attend a really special ceremony with someone that some of you know. Her name is Elena Troya, and Elena worked for the Greater Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. She was my Ward Six appointee to the Community Action Agency for a couple of years. She's currently attending OU's graduate school to get a degree in urban planning. Elena is originally from Peru, and at 1:00 today, she became an American citizen. So I just want to congratulate her. It's a really special thing, and so I'm sorry I couldn't be there to celebrate with her.
John? Pat?
I just want to congratulate my colleagues on putting this thing off long enough so we'll all qualify as senior citizens.
Even me?
Yeah, even you. I have a question on what's going to transpire during this four-week hiatus. Every councilman will get a copy of each of the two proposals.
I would anticipate that we'll set up some meetings for you.
And we'll have this small, but not until we've had a chance to review the proposals.
That's fine.
So we'll have some understanding of what we're going to talk about in your small meeting.
Okay.
During the first two weeks, we can all get copies of that thing and read them. In the second two weeks, we can have these meetings.
I'll bet you we can get your proposals this week, and then we can, we'll be good.
I'll add, we have a trip next Tuesday to go visit the Senior Wellness Center in North Little Rock, Arkansas. So there's members of staff, members of the subcommittee involving wellness. Council is invited to attend. It'll be an all-day back-and-forth bus trip to Little Rock, and I'll be on board, so would invite any of you all to come. And the media has been invited as well. We have executive session? We have city management reports, sorry?
Just, no, just want to highlight, the last sales tax check for the year came in one point, or for the year were 1.3% over target, so that's pretty good projecting, and it's better to be over target than under target, and that equates to about $2.6 million. We started out quite strongly above target, then for the first six months, then we kind of leveled off the last six months, so it'll be interesting to watch how that trend continues. But we're still comfortable with our projections going into fiscal '14.
So what was it last month?
The last month, it was 2.6 under target. It was 0.3% over the previous year.
All right, we have executive session?
Mayor, just one other item, and I'm sorry I couldn't keep up with you today, but on item A, ten-A, the judge's ordinance, we do need the emergency, so it will be effective.
Okay.
Move the emergency.
Second.
Thank you.
Passed unanimously?
Okay.
We have returned from executive session, and we are adjourned. Do I need to adjourn the other, the MFA?
Yes, and the PPA.
Okay, and we are also adjourning PPA.